Good evening. Welcome to the Special Meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, September 8th, 2015. This special meeting has one purpose, and that is to interview two of our four candidates for superintendent. As a refresher to the community, Dr. Leapa has taken the position of the Wayne Risa Superintendent, which leaves this Board of Education with a very, very serious task of replacing our superintendent. We started that process back a few months now. We have sought input from the community and various stakeholders on what you're looking for in a superintendent. We had an application window that was open until August 28th. We did have 27 applicants apply for the position. This board took a very hard look and hard study of the materials that were turned in, and we tonight have two of the four candidates that we are going to be bringing in for interviews for this position. Two will be interviewed tonight, two will be interviewed tomorrow night, Wednesday night, and then Thursday evening, this board will deliberate and bring that four down to two that will be brought back for the next round of interviews that will take place next week. So we are knee-deep in the whole process and happy to be so. The first item on our agenda this evening will be audience communications. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the Board of Education tonight? I didn't think so. Seeing none, we will go right on into our process this evening. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to welcome Ron Wilson, our first applicant who's going to be interviewing with our board this evening. Ron is the former superintendent of the Howell School District, not too far away from here. And I'm going to take just a few moments to describe our format this evening, so everyone is familiar with it. What we'll do first is introduce our board members. I'm going to go around the board table, let each board member introduce him or herself. In addition to our board members this evening, we're going to have our superintendent and our director of human resources introduce themselves also, and then they'll speak to that after their introduction. Mrs. Jarvis, would you like to start us off with introductions?
Thank you, President Burton. Hi, Ron. My name is Liz Jarvis, and I'm the newbie in the group. So, welcome to Livonia tonight.
Thank you.
Ron and Dan Centers, and I'm probably the second least senior person on the board. I've been here about a year and a half now.
Hi, Tammy Bonnefield. I'm the current secretary, and I have two children in the district.
My name is Colleen Burton. I'm the president of the school board. I have the longest current tenure on the board, and that is six years, but that is second to our next board member, who will introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Diane Laura, and I'm the vice president of the board. I have been on the board in the 90s for five years, so I guess that doesn't count.
It all counts.
It's cumulative.
Well, then I have about nine and a half years' experience on the board, then all the officers, and decided to do it again when I retired four years ago. So, welcome.
Welcome, Ron. I'm Amy McDonald. This is my fourth year on the board, and I had a daughter that just graduated this past June, so no more children in the district for me, but happy to be here. Thank you.
Hi, Ron. I introduce myself before, I'm Mark Johnson. I think I'm the outside of Mrs. Laura and President Burton, I'm the third senior member with going on six years on the board. And as I told you, my daughter graduated from Hope College and went to Stevenson High School. Glad you're here tonight, thanks.
Thank you, good to be here.
Hi, Ron. Nice to see you again. Andrea Oakwist, interim superintendent.
Dana Winery, human resources director.
Good to see you.
I want to make sure that the community is aware, it is up to the school board to make the decision on hiring the new superintendent. At the table with us this evening, in addition to Mr. Wilson, Andrea Oakwist is at the table because our school board does not do anything apart from the knowledge of our superintendent. So I want her to have firsthand knowledge of what's going on with this process, so she's joining us at the table tonight. Also, we are very blessed to have Dana Winery be our administrative point person through the entire process. Therefore, he's with us every step of the way also. The interview this evening will take up to 90 minutes, and there will be about 25 to 30 questions, some asked by each one of the board members. At the end of the interview, or toward the end, we're going to give the candidates an opportunity to ask questions of the board also. Questions may also be submitted by the audience if they wish. Near the end of our interview process, Mr. Mike Wilmot, who is seated in our audience this evening, will go around and gather any questions that you may have come up with throughout the evening. There will also be an opportunity for the candidate to make a closing statement. And Mike Wilmot in our audience, and Diane Laura, our vice president, will be helping to keep us on time this evening, try to keep us all on track. The audience feedback and questions may be submitted from our audience on the forms that were located just outside the door. If you haven't seen any, they are the green half-sheets that look something like this. The board will consider these comments if the form is signed, the questions are not duplicates or illegal, and if time permits. The task of choosing our next superintendent is a responsibility of the Board of Education as representatives of our community. We appreciate and seek the input of staff and our community throughout the process. While we are not seeking recommendations as to which individual should be hired, we are seeking your input as to the strengths and concerns about each of the candidates. Please keep in mind the issues that we may not use for hiring on a legal basis through our hiring process. And again, we'll pick up any questions that you have near the end of the interview. I'm going to go ahead and start off with a few opening questions for you, Ron. While we've had the opportunity to review your resume, our audience has not. Would you please briefly describe your background and what causes you to be interested in this position at this point in your career?
Certainly. First, I'd like to start by thanking the board for the opportunity to interview tonight. I'm honored to be one of your candidates, and I also wanted to introduce, I'm here tonight with the love of my life, in the past 34 years, my wife, Elizabeth. She's joining us here. We have three children, two grandchildren. A little bit about the personal background. My career began teaching at a residential treatment facility for emotionally impaired juvenile delinquents. And I taught vocational readiness, and that was Eagle Village, and I was there for four years. After leaving Eagle Village to take a job with Mount Pleasant Public Schools, where I taught vocational building trades and math. And I was in that position for six years. In 1993, I was hired by Harrison Community Schools as an assistant principal at their middle school, and also as the special ed director for the district. Unlike some of the larger districts, in those little districts, you quite often wear several different hats. I served in that capacity for about six years, and then I was promoted to middle school principal and curriculum director for the district. And I was in that position until 2006, where I actually graduated in 2005 from the Michigan Leadership Institute Superintendent's Academy, and was hired by Cass City Public Schools as their superintendent and their business manager. And I was in that position for four years. Interesting, some of the things I had to deal with, I inherited a deficit district, so you know, had to work us out of that situation, and we did that in one year, and it passed a bond issue, and made some significant improvements, you know, in student achievement. I left Cass City in 2010, was hired by Howell Public Schools, and I served for nearly five years in that position. And I wanted to, if I could, and I am sensitive about the board not being able to maybe ask a question about Howell with respect to my leaving Howell, but I'd like to at least offer a statement, just so maybe to kind of put you a little bit at ease if possible. With respect to my time in Howell, there's a few things specifically I wanted to call out. When I accepted the position in Howell, I was the fifth superintendent in as many years. And I should point out that I was not the first, the board's first choice. I was runner-up, and the guy that they hired came and worked for just a few days and then resigned. And he had been presented by the board president with a list of people that she wanted dismissed, a staff that she wanted dismissed. And so I didn't find out about that until after I had accepted the position. But what I did do, there were several issues in the community that were going on. One of them was that they had a $70 million high school that they had built, and didn't have the money to operate that, and had been sitting vacant for about five years. They lost over 1,000 students to neighboring school districts, which was certainly difficult. So when the board consultant called me and asked me if I was still interested in the position, I said I would be interested, however, there were three conditions that the board would need to mutually agree upon. And the first one was that we would have, within the first 60 days on the job, a retreat for myself and the board president, just a workshop facilitated by MASB to try to outline, you know, what good, effective, you know, board president, superintendent relations are like. The second one was that there would be a governance workshop, that we could focus on the importance of good school board superintendent, you know, relationships and partnerships. And the third was to establish a standard of practices which outlined the roles of the board and the roles of the superintendent. And so the board mutually agreed to that, and they hired me. And I served there for the first four years, things were relatively calm, and we had a significant change in our board. During the time that I was there, I had 14 different board members, just in four years. Like I said, I served there for almost five years. During June of 2014, I received my fourth effective evaluation, and they actually extended my contract. And then they also gave me a $6,200 raise. And on August 14th, or excuse me, August of 2014, or last summer, I raised concerns about non-compliance with the mutually agreed-upon standards of practice and board policy. The concerns addressed complaints by employees that were levied at my office, not at my office, but that were brought to me because I was a compliance officer, claiming that they were being harassed and intimidated by a particular board member. Six weeks later, I was placed on paid administrative leave and then consequently discharged. The claim for dismissing me stated that I had received $309 in mileage reimbursements that I wasn't entitled to. This was hard for me to accept or fathom, because both my contract and board policy allow me to be reimbursed, or stipulates that I will be reimbursed for school-related travel outside of the district. And all three of the instances were for school-related travel outside of the district. So that brings me to where I'm at right now. And so the last nine months, I worked for a data analytics company in Grand Rapids. They do benchmarking for public schools. That's how I first became in contact with Livonia. I had visited with Randy, and then with your superintendent's cabinet here this summer, and have had the chance to do a fairly detailed analysis, both financially and academically, of Livonia. And so, and I had remarked, you know, how impressed I was, you know, with your leadership team, and not only their scope and depth of their knowledge, but just the way they received, the whole notion of data analytics and using data to improve student achievement. And so when the job was posted, I first called Randy and had a long talk with him, and then talked to Mike Wilmot. And so I am very pleased to be here, and I'm thankful for the opportunity. In case you're wondering, the disposition of the situation in Howell, my contract provided for arbitration, and so we're in arbitration on my contract right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Given what you know about our school district, and it does sound like you have some significant knowledge of it, could you please tell us what you believe are the most immediate challenges that we face?
Well, I think that, looking from a financial standpoint, there certainly is some immediate challenges there. I think when you couple declining enrollment and flat funding essentially from the state, it's kind of a double-edged sword, and it makes things somewhat challenging. I think that is a problem that can be addressed and overcome, and I think my financial background, I've got some ideas on how some of those things might be addressed. You're in very good hands. Your business manager here has done a nice job. It's interesting, and looking at the analyzing your financial data, comparing you to similar districts, similar size, similar demographics, you really are doing rather well financially. And certainly, there's some areas that you need to look at, but I think that overall, you know, you're doing a lot of the right things, and I think that that's important. From an academic standpoint, you know, I could see that there are some gaps, some achievement gaps, in some of the different levels between special ed students and even some of your economically disadvantaged students. I think that if you compare you to the benchmark districts that we identified, you know, overall, you're doing rather well, especially on the level at which you're being funded. And in the 10 comparable districts, Livonia was near the middle of the pack in terms of revenues. And primarily, the districts that were outperforming, you were receiving significantly more in their foundation allowance, so. But I think that there's a couple things that, and I've had a chance to talk with your superintendent about it, and I think there's a couple things that could be looked at. I think sometimes just kind of looking at things through a different lens, you know. One of the things about data analytics is it really does a nice job of providing you an opportunity to see how you compare to other districts that are working with the same population, same demographics, and there's some real power in that.
Okay. Thank you. And we're almost out of my section of time, but if we could just briefly, I'm going to hit one last question with you. What specific capabilities and/or qualities would you bring to this position that would set you apart from the other candidates?
Well, I-
Such an important question, I didn't want to omit it, but then we will jump onto the next individual.
I think it's interesting, because most of the people that I would be supervising, that would be direct reporters, are people that I have worked in their job capacity. And I think that's, having a good understanding of the work they do, I think is somewhat of an advantage. I think that my leadership style, I'm very collaborative, and I believe in hiring good quality people and letting them do their jobs. Richard DeFor talked about it as loose tight leadership. There are some things that we're going to be real tight on, and there are some things that we're going to give people the autonomy to do on their own. And so I think that those two things really are an added value, or make me uniquely qualified.
Okay. Thank you. We will next be hearing from Mrs. Laura. What we're going to be doing is each board member will be asking three or four questions on different topic areas.
We're going to talk a little bit about community relations. First of all, how specifically would you go about establishing and maintaining positive public relations within our community?
In each of the districts I've served as a superintendent, we ended up moving to that district, and I got very involved in the community. In Howell, I was on the Rotary Club, I was very active in the chamber. I was past president of the Howell Rotary Club, did a lot of things with the downtown business authority, really went out of my way to become enmeshed in the community. And I think that's important. Although the board really represents the community, you know, within the school, I think it's really important for your superintendent to be visible in other venues other than just at school. And so those kind of relationships are important. I think that, you know, we, and each community that we've lived in, both as superintendent and principal, we've joined a local church, and once again, have really become not just people that are dropping into the community to work, but people that are members of the community.
Would you share with us ways in which you have accomplished successful communications with the community regarding your district's problems or accomplishments?
Okay. We actually had done some work and identified that about 70% of our students, or excuse me, of our parents under age 40 were using social media. And so we started pushing out a lot of information on the district and the community via social media. We also did podcasts that were available to the community. I also was able to get on the speaking circuit at Good Morning Livingston, which is a monthly meeting within our community of business members and political advocates. And so had a chance to actually present at two different occasions, the state of the school district, and kind of some of the things that we were accomplishing, the points of pride. We did a really nice job. We also had a showcase of our students and programs at a fundraiser we did with our Howell Education Foundation. And we had actually business community members that bought tables, and in one night, we raised a little over $83,000 for our Howell Education Foundation, which is for student scholarships. And so, just, and like I said, being visible there, we worked the balloon fest in Howell, both with the Rotary Club and with the chamber. We also worked the melon fest and the tour to Livingston, and so very, very visible in the community. And I think that, once again, that is so important because of the opportunity, the conversations that you have when you're working with somebody at a festival or something, you know, are totally different than you have on the phone, or, you know, across the desk, you know, in the superintendent's office.
Speaking of the educational foundation, that's my last question, but I'm going to ask it now, since you mentioned it. Would you like to add more about your experience with dealing with the educational foundations? And what role do you see as, see an educational foundation playing in the public school district today?
Well, in my experience, it's been very important that we were able to, in Howell, we didn't have funding for, we had lost the funding necessary for our building trades programs, or Howell Education Foundation took that over and would buy the lot for us each year, and would carry the paper on the building until it sold. And that was something that was a collaborative measure that we did. And it's interesting, we're still involved with that. My wife, even though I haven't been in the district for almost a year, was overdecorating the house that we did here this last year, and it just sold. And so we've been fortunate, you know, with that. The Howell Education Foundation has also been able to provide us some things that we wouldn't normally be able to provide for kids. There's a reaching higher program that we integrated, which is a self-esteem program that we integrated into our middle schools, elementary and high school. I look at the foundation as partnership, and it's a great opportunity. Many of the members of the board were community members, either business members, many of them were retired educators that came back and wanted to serve. So I think it's really a unique opportunity to do some things that you might not be able to do without their help.
And one last question for me. What are some examples of community activities in which you have been an active participant and/or provided leadership, and in which ways did that benefit your district?
Okay. Probably the greatest, greatest help that I saw in the community was my contacts with Rotary Club, and both in Howell and in Cass City. In Cass City, as incoming president, I spearheaded the building of a band pavilion, or music pavilion downtown, and was able to pull different community members together and generate funds for that. And we used it to highlight our music programs in the school, you know, with our kids. And Howell, the connections with the Rotary Club were great. You know, if I had needs, especially, you know, financial needs, you know, if a student needed an instrument, or, you know, I had, you know, people that were members of the Rotary that were highly successful business people in our community, that would come to me and say, hey, you know, there's something I can do to help a specific child, or to help the district, you know, please let me know. And over and over again, it was almost humbling, the willingness that people were, the level of giving that they would give. And quite often, it wasn't, I didn't even have to ask for it, they just said, hey, you know, we want to help you out, just, you know. I still remember having lunch with one businessman one day, and we needed $2,500 to round out one of our classes in reaching higher, and he wrote me a check right there for $2,500, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And Mr. Johnson will be asking the next few questions.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Hi, Ron. I'm going to talk a little bit about political awareness. So, what do you feel that the superintendent's role is in influencing county and state political processes impacting K-12 education, and how have you been involved in these processes?
Both as superintendent in Howell and Cass City, I testified before the K-12 appropriations. And in Cass City's incidents, it was a situation where they were looking at having flat funding or reducing funding for public schools. And I was speaking on behalf of several deficit districts in the state that talked about the fact that that would be a one-two punch, you know, as far as pushing districts into deficit. Probably was more involved when I was in Howell, just because of our relationship or proximity to Lansing. You know, we were about 39 minutes from Lansing. And had developed a great friendship with both our senator and state rep, and our US rep, two of which were graduates of our school district, so it was easy to get there. But was very, very involved in promoting, and at times questioning, you know, the logic, you know, I mean, how do you justify taking $470 a student away from K-12 and giving it to four-year universities and junior colleges? And so, and it's interesting, too, is the, I think that, you know, superintendents should be advocates for their community, and obviously what is happening in Lansing, and even in local politics, has an impact on the school district.
Thanks. What do you think is the most important educational policy challenge facing districts like ours, either at the state or federal level?
Well, I think it's twofold. I think that one of the problems that I see is they're constantly changing, you know, and I think about the work that, you know, that I've been doing for the last nine months, evaluating school district data, and looking at how the funding mechanism has changed, and how that flat funding has occurred. And I think that's been something that's very hard to palate. There's been a decline, not only in state funding, but also in other funding for numerous types of programs. I think the other thing that, to me, is really challenging, and I know there's really mixed emotions on this, but having been a curriculum director, we were really looking for the opportunity, and I say "we" superintendents in Michigan, at the opportunity to have a curriculum that, you know, wherever a student went to school in Michigan, they had basically, at least the basics, you know. You know, what they were going to learn by grade, by course, and by unit would be somewhat, you know, constant. And whether it's the common core, or the grade-level content expectations, you know, it was, we needed something in that regard. And I know that the legislature struggled with that, and went away from at least the common core portion. I think that not having, if you're going to evaluate schools and use a standardized test to evaluate schools, there needs to be some consistency. You can't, for instance, have a Meep test for a few years, and then switch to My Step, and I've heard rumors that they're going to go to NWA next. And so I think that there needs to be some consistency in that, and I think there's a lack of, lack of forethought in making those kind of moves. I think the other thing, too, that is tough, is that, you know, we have not, as a state, really called attention to the fact that how the level of poverty has changed. And, you know, when I graduated from high school in '79, my dad was the Michigan Week Speaker in Lake County, and he had asked me to do some, I had a couple weeks where I started my summer job, so he asked me to do some research. And I had sat down with the Social Services Director for Lake County, and at that time, only about 20% of the kids in the state got free reduced lunch, you know, and so essentially 20% of the kids loved that or below the poverty level. The state average is now, you know, close to 50%. And so, you know, it's, we're not dealing with the same population that we were dealing with, you know, 20 years, or even 10 years ago. I mean, there's some significant changes, and I think that, you know, that's partly reflective of some policies and just changes that have happened in our society.
Okay. Okay. My last question is, what has been the most unpopular administrative decision you've had to make? And how did you handle the reaction to that decision?
Just one, huh? Probably the one that, for me, is most recent, has to do with a situation involving our hockey team, and where I, we had a hockey team that, four years before I came to Howell, had won a couple state championships, and been runner-up in another year, and had a situation where a parent came to see me, and the hockey team had gone to an event in Marquette, and had some issues with some disorderly conduct on the part of our staff. And the worst thing was there was a hazing incident where the kids were taken to a local drinking establishment, and the underclassmen were dressed in women's undergarment while the patrons stuck money in their bras and panties, while the coach went ahead and provided them a monologue. And so I fired all three coaches, and took a lot of heat. And I actually can remember a pretty heated meeting with a group of parents that were really upset, you know, and so I kind of just reiterated, you know, that there's standards that we want to uphold for our kids and for our community, and certainly, hazing's not one of them, nor taking underclass- And, and certainly hazing's not one of them, nor taking underclassmen, you know, to a bar and, and exposing them to that kind of behavior. So, and that was really tough. That was, I probably still have, I may have enemies watching right as I speak, you know, because of that situation. So that was one of the more difficult ones.
Thanks. I'll turn it over this time to Mr. Centers.
Great. Thank you. Ron, we're going to talk about leadership attributes. My first question, could you describe your typical style of leading and talk about situations in which you might vary from that style?
I tend to be very collaborative in my leadership style. I know from my experience and, and outside reading that, that when you're dealing with knowledge-based workers, you know, educated employees, you know, the control and command method doesn't work. It works in emergency situations for very short periods of time, but it's, it doesn't work well in a school district. And so I guess first and foremost, I like to make sure that people understand what my expectations are. I like to make sure that I, I paint a clear picture of where we're going and, and that make sure that they have the tools and the supplies they need in order to achieve that. And that once we achieve those goals, that's going to be worth it. And so, and I think that, that probably one of my strongest points is working very collaboratively, you know, with, with the staff in the district. Even, you know, I, I had a great incredible relationship, especially in Howell, with my union leadership, both at the administrative level and at the teachers' level and support staff level. And to the extent where, where when the board dismissed me, many of them stood up and made some pretty positive comments on my behalf. And so I think that's, I think that's really important. I think that, that like I said, there's times where, you know, especially in emergency or crisis situations, you know, where you have to be a little more autocratic and, and, you know, giving directions. And I've had to deal with some very, you know, difficult situations and, and both as a principal and as a superintendent, which, you know, in emergency situations, you sometimes have to take charge of the situation.
Great. Appreciate that. The next question is, could you please describe your leadership experience working with diverse constituents, ethnically, socially and/or economically?
You know, when I, when I worked at Eagle Village, of course, you know, I had a pretty broad range of students and, and parents that we worked with, both as, both as far as ethnicity and socioeconomic. When, in Mount Pleasant, we had a fairly significant Native American population that we worked very closely with. And, and Harrison, it was kind of a different situation. It was more, more, not so much as ethnically diverse, but very poor, very poor kids. We had almost an eighty percent free and reduced lunch count. And, and there's a whole myriad of problems that are associated, you know, with those statistics. And Cass City was kind of rural farming and, and so that was a little bit different for me. And then, of course, Howell was much more affluent than any district that I've worked in, you know, having less than forty percent free and reduced lunch. And it's interesting, based on the last census, the mean income in Howell was almost twice as the mean income in, in Cass City. So even the, the issues or things you dealt with is, is associated with that were much, much different.
Thank you.
Certainly. What are some examples of how you have used data and research to make important decisions in your current position?
Well, it's interesting. The company that I'm currently working for, we had purchased their product when I was superintendent in Howell.
Okay.
And had used it very effectively and actually had engaged some of my colleagues, even some close to here in Farmington that are using the product. And so we're able to, the best, the best description I can give you of what we were doing or what we did with the program, if you think about what the World Health Organization does when it goes into an area where there's an epidemic, they look for people who are living in the same region, under the same circumstances, that aren't being afflicted by the disease. And they, they call that positive deviance. And so what's really interesting is that we were able to do that by, by identifying comparable districts based on free and reduced lunch count, based on the size of the district. We, we looked or targeted districts that were dealing with the same population and that were outperforming us. And then we reached out to them and said, you know, what are you doing? What's the positive deviance? You know, what are you doing that's facilitating this change? And it also allowed us to benchmark our financial data, you know, so that we could see how we were spending our money compared to our peers. And if we saw peers that were significantly underspending us, yet seeing significant results, then, then that was another area that we reached out to them. So data's pretty important. I think that, that you have to kind of, you know, recognize that it's not an end-all or a cure-all, but it did allow us to start looking not only at leading indicators of data, but also lagging indicators of data too. And so it changed. It allows us to look at things with a new lens.
Okay. One, one last question for me. What are the key practices needed to establish and maintain a good working relationship with the board, parents, members of the local business community?
Well, I think communication is really important. I think trust is extremely important. And I think that, you know, being willing to have those crucial conversations, there's at times where you have to have difficult conversations and, but it can be done in a, in a tactful and, and yet loving way. And I think that that's really important.
Great. That's all I have. We're going, I'm going to turn you over to Ms. McDonald.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Centers. And again, welcome, Ron.
Thank you.
So my part of the question and answers is based on instruction and curriculum.
Okay.
And my first question is, please give us examples of educational change or reform that you've initiated that improve success for all students.
Okay. Probably the, my first real success in the classroom was when I was teaching building trades in Mount Pleasant and building trades in math. And I had a lot of kids that were special needs students and, and we built a house every year and, and basically gave them a vocation or a trade. And, and that was, that was an extremely rewarding experience. And it's quite, one of the things that, that, you know, I looked at, you know, that fact that I was successful in the classroom and I wanted to be able to maybe take that to a little bit larger arena. And so as a, when I started off in Harrison, I was assistant principal and, and then was promoted to principal. And our building was a failing building. We were working with the Department of Ed because we had a couple failing buildings in our district. And so I and my staff wrote a comprehensive school reform demonstration grant and were able to bring in about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars over a three-year period. And we made some significant changes and, and in a year and a half went from being a failing building, you know, to an exemplary building. And in essence, what we did is we, we really tightly embraced Richard DeFord's work. And Richard DeFord talks about answering three corollary questions. The first of which is, are we clear what we expect students to know by grade, by course and by unit, which is essentially your curriculum? The second piece was, how are we going to know when students are learning? So in other words, do we have a good series of common assessments, both formative and summative, that can give us feedback as to, you know, how kids are, if they're learning? And then the fourth, the third one is, if they're not learning, how are we going to respond? You know. And one of the things that, that troubles me about standardized tests, if you look at the MEEP and the cycle that we were on with the MEEP up until this last year, they'd give the test in October and we wouldn't get the results until, you know, sometime March or April. And so it was kind of like having a heart attack in October and not finding out till March or April. You know, you really, it was a lagging indicator and you couldn't do anything with, with that data. So by coming up with common assessments, we worked with, actually with Sam Ewing from Wayne Resha to develop a whole series of common assessments so that during the school year, we could track progress. And if students were struggling, we responded by providing extra time on task, remediation if necessary. And so it was highly effective. And I think if you look at a lot of the work that's been done, a lot of the, a lot of the prominent educational authors today, a lot of their work has a real strong foundation in that, in, in answering those three corollary questions.
Okay. Thank you. Our next question is, please describe your experience in dealing with both low incident and high incident special education students.
Well, the, the high incident, when I was working at Eagle Village, we had some kids that had some pretty severe needs and that severely emotional impairments. Not so much LD kids, but kids that just because of their circumstances, you know, had, had some real issues. And when I was in, in Harrison as special ed director, we, our special ed rate was about sixteen percent, which is rather high. And so I dealt with a lot of issues with fetal alcohol syndrome and some other, you know, treatable mentally impaired issues and stuff like that. But, you know, have a real, you know, love for that group, you know, and see the importance of giving every student, you know, the best opportunity they can to be successful. I have been a strong advocate, you know, not only when I was a special ed director, but as a curriculum director and a superintendent, you know, that, you know, that, that we want to educate all kids. And I know sometimes that seems like a lofty goal, but, you know, we can, we can, I believe all kids can learn. And just if, if you don't believe that, then you have to wonder how it is the kids are, become potty trained, you know, because it's not time-bound. It's like, whatever it takes, as long as it takes, we're going to make sure that, that it happens. So. But no, I, I think I'm very well-versed in, in special education policy and have had some, probably some of, some of the more challenging issues I've had to deal with, have dealt with special ed issues and compliance issues and working through that, so.
Great. Thank you. And the next question, how would you go, go about evaluating the effectiveness of curriculum, teaching methods and assessment used in our district?
Well, I, I think that, that, you know, back to my comments that, that, you know, you want to hire good people and let them do their jobs. And so the first thing I would want to do is have a chance to sit with those different administrative team members that, that are responsible or providing oversight in those areas and get a better understanding, you know, of what they have done. And like I said, I, because of my work with the district so far, I've spent, you know, probably, probably, I don't want to say probably, a day or more on your data and really digging in and studying and looking at, at some of the trends. And I think that, that speaks, you know, volumes. You know, we're able to, to break things down, not only by cohort group, but by grade level and cohort group. And so I think there's some things to be gleaned from that. One of the things that, that the first thing I looked at when I looked at your data, when I see anomalies in, in achievement, I ask the question, is this an instructional issue or is this a curricular issue? You know, is our curriculum fully aligned? Kids tend to learn what we teach them, you know. So if the curriculum is fully aligned, that would be one of the first places I would look. And, and then certainly instructional practice. And I, I know that, you know, from when I started teaching until I went into administration, my, my skill set changed significantly. And we all grow and mature, you know, as teachers and administrators. And so I think it's important that we're providing, you know, good quality professional development for our staff and that is embedded in best practice. And so I, I think that there was, those are just a couple of ways that I would start to dig in. But, you know, one of the things, and I experienced this when I went from, from Cass City, which was about sixteen hundred students, to Howell, which was about eight thousand. And the transition wasn't as hard as I thought it would, but it, it takes a little bit of time to get up to speed and get to know the district. And so I, I just know from experience that, that those first few months on the job, it's kind of like trying to get a drink of water out of a fire hose, you know. And there's a lot to point. But two of the things, I think, that I really believe that, that what's happening in the classroom is probably one of the most important things happening in the district. And matter of fact, there's nothing more important happening in the community than what's happening in those buildings. And, and then secondly, you know, to work with those staff members and work with your team, you know, to, to set achievement goals, you know. And, and even if it's just identifying, you know, things that you're doing well, you know, and looking within your own district for, you know, do you have certain buildings that are outperforming other buildings, you know? And, and not to set up competition, but to look and say, okay, you know, what's happening in this building? You know, you know, why are they seeing better results in this building? And, and so kind of using, you know, your internal positive deviance also.
Great. Thank you. Well, that's the end of my questions. Now I turn it over to Mrs. Jarvis.
Hey, Ron. We're going to talk about finance and operations.
Okay.
If you would, please describe your experience with budget development and financial management.
Okay. Extensive experience, when I was in, when I was a principal in Harrison, we had got a new business manager. And, and he thought it was important that each building principal understand their, their own budget for their building. And so that was my first real immersion into public school finance. Then when I became a curriculum director, also having to deal with the consolidated apps and budgets, you know, was, was a second kind of awakening. The third awakening was when I became superintendent in, in Cass City and I was superintendent and business manager. And I was on the job about two weeks and, and discovered that the board didn't know that, that we were a deficit district. And they thought they had about six percent fund equity and they were about two and a half percent in the red. And so had to go ahead and set up some, I worked with our auditors and worked with the Michigan Association of School Business Officials and went ahead and, and implemented some different procedures. And this was back early on, shortly after Gatsby 38 came out. And so the rules were changing, the rules, you know, governing, you know, public school funding and, and the whole, you know, FID information, the FID data that we have to submit every November. So anyways, I, I became a very quick study, you know, of public school finance. And we were able to, in a year, work our way out of deficit. And it wasn't easy. We had to cut about fifteen percent of our budget. But the challenge was, and this goes back to a whole issue of financing collaboration, I wasn't the one that just pulled the trigger and said, we're going to cut here, we're going to cut here, we're going to cut here. I went back to our individual buildings and department heads and said, what cuts can we make that will have the least impact on student achievement? And so they were actually the ones that came forward, you know, with the majority of the cuts. And so when people have skin on the game, so to speak, they tend to make much better decisions, I believe. And so I, since then, I've, I've done some consulting for deficit districts. Currently in the last nine months, worked with several deficit districts around the state, providing some, you know, collaborative help or, I don't know, lack of a better term, kind of just making some real fundamental recommendations on how they might be able to work their, work themselves on a deficit. And so I feel that that's probably, I, I know that not many superintendents come from a financial background. And so that was a, that was a great opportunity, you know, for me. I think it gave me a much better insight, made my conversations with my, with my finance director in Howell much richer, you know, after having that experience, so.
Okay. Very good. Ron, in, in tough financial times, how do you set priorities when there are competing interests?
Well, I, you know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, I think that, that, you know, our profit and loss statement is student achievement. So we really have to, you know, look at student achievement. And I think you have to allocate funds that are going to have the greatest impact in those areas. And so it's something that has to be done collaboratively. I know when I went to the board in Cass City and told them that we were a deficit district, I actually had an accountant that was on our board. And he said, you know, the guy that was here before you was here for twenty-two years and we've always, you know, been pretty solid financially. And so he said, would, you know, talk to our auditors and see what they think. And so, you know, I came back to the board and I said, you know, we have some tough decisions to make and, and it's not going to be, it's not necessarily going to be easy. Nonetheless, it comes down to, some of the decisions are going to be unpopular. It comes down to a decision, am I going to cut my thumb off or my little finger? Neither one of them are very appealing, but, you know, you have to make a decision what's going to be best for the whole. And so that's not an easy task. That's, that's certainly not an easy task, but it's something that you have to address. And I think that, you know, having good, strong board involvement and having the involvement of our staff and, and not just our administrative staff, but our online staff, really offered up some great suggestions and ways that we could, you know, tighten our belt and, and still, you know, maintain good achievement.
All right. And what has been your experience dealing with the schools of choice program? What do you see as advantages and disadvantages of these kind of programs?
Well, I think that, that, you know, one of the disadvantages is it makes it hard to plan as an administrator. But because before schools of choice, the kids basically had to live in your district in order to attend, you know, attend your district. And so, you know, with the schools of choice, it's created some interesting issues. I noticed in looking at Lemonia's data that you have about seven hundred kids that leave you via schools of choice. About half go to charters and about half go to public schools. That's, that's a net loss because you, you gain some and you, and you lose some. because you gain some and you lose some. And I think, like I said, as an administrator, I just know from having to deal with some of the more controversial issues that I dealt with in Howell, is it seemed every time you had a controversial issue where there was a lot of negative involvement, you know, with the media and things like that, that we saw a loss of kids. And, you know, you know, your administrative staff and the board, you know, approved a budget before June thirtieth, you know, and, you know, anticipating or projecting, this is what we think we're going to have in enrollment, this is what we're going to have in foundation grants and our foundation allowance. And really, you won't know until you have your October countenance audited, you know, whether, exactly what you're going to get. And so I think that's been challenging. If you look at public school finance, when I first started in education, it was kind of like watching a slow-moving freight train. You know, you could look away and things didn't change very much. And now it's kind of like a bullet train, you know, and you take your eye off it just for a few moments and it's, the picture's changed.
Interesting analogy. We'll just head down the track then to Ms. Bonfield.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, we're on to staff and personnel.
Okay.
So please describe your most successful experience in building a high-performing work team.
You know, one of the things when I went to, when I went to Howell, in addition to turning over superintendents, they turned over a lot of administrators. And so a lot of administrators had come from outside and then left. And so I really started looking inside the district and looked through who our rising stars were and people that had some interest in administration. And so I think that in the, you know, four and a half years I was in Howell, I think I replaced or had to fill about fifteen administrative positions. And all but two of those, I filled from within. And I think that that was a real, you know, it sent a message not only to my staff, you know, that, you know, that we recognize the good work you're doing and if you have aspirations to, you know, move into administration or a different position, that that's really, really, you know, something that we want to accommodate. Many of the, many of the people that went from being teachers to assistant principals, then on the principals too, came up through that route. I think that, I really believe that the greatest asset that any district has is its staff. And the people that work for you and the fact that you acknowledge the hard work they're doing. And, you know, I think of appreciative leadership, you know, ways that you can lead and let people know you really appreciate the work that they're doing. And especially in this, in this culture, we haven't been able to, haven't been able to provide much in terms of salary increases, you know. And so as a result, I even see, you know, more importance in letting people know how you value their work and their sacrifices.
How would the presidents of the various unions in your most recent district describe you? And I know you've touched on that, but if you could...
Yeah. I think they would say that I was a man of integrity. I think they would say that I was very fair. I think that they would say that I could be tactful to the extent that I could tell someone to go to Howell in such a fashion that they would look forward to the trip. And I, having to deal with some difficult, you know, situations and, but I, I counted our, three of our union presidents in the teachers' union were very close. And when I had difficult situations, you know, whether it was with the staff or we were looking at budget cuts or whatever, you know, I would include them in that circle. When it came time to look at redistricting and possibly closing a building, I created a committee that included all of my union presidents in the district, as well as at least one staff member from each one of their work groups. And so I think that they would tell you that they, that they had my ear, you know, but it was a mutually respective relationship and that they weren't going to, they weren't, because they had my ear, they weren't going to coerce me to do something I didn't think was good, good for the district. But like I said, it was a mutual respectfully situation. And there were times, I think in some very difficult bargaining here, two summers ago, the bargaining team on our teacher's side had gotten up and said, we're done, you know, we're, we're going to fact find it, you know. And I asked if the union president could sit with me for a few minutes, went into my office, you know, and I said, you know, we really, for the good of the district, for the good of your staff and the kids, we need to get this done. And they all had their coats on, they were going out the door, and they all came back. So, you know, having that kind of relationship, you know, with your staff and with your union leadership's important because you can, you know, you know, it's, it's like making deposits, you know. And if you've made a lot of deposits, you can make a withdrawal now and then.
What is your philosophy regarding effective professional development for teachers and principals? What role should professional learning communities play, if any?
Yeah, I'm a big fan of professional learning communities. I think that if you look at, you know, most professions, you know, they have some vehicle for which you can improve and learn from colleagues. And, you know, having experience with family members that are in the legal profession, another one that's a medical doctor, and, you know, I see that. I see them engaged in those kind of activities. And I think we can do a better job with that in education. I think that sometimes, as educators, we get so tied up in the urgent things that we don't quite often take enough time to look at those things that are important and are really going to make a difference. And so it's, you know, I believe in being collaborative in that. I did allow my building principals and school improvement teams to schedule a good portion of their own professional development based on their goals for their building and, you know, how they were performing. And there were some things that we did more collaboratively district-wide too. But I think that that's a great opportunity. And I really think of being a teacher or administrator as being a practice, you know, that we continually are learning and improving our skills. You know, it's interesting, the advances that occurred in modern medicine and technology in the last thirty years have also occurred in the realm of brain dominance and what we know about how students learn and how they learn the best. And so I think certainly, and I know that there's a lot of things that I learned, you know, back in the late seventies, early eighties, you know, when I was, you know, going through the teaching programs and that have changed, you know. And the whole idea of neuroplasticity and the fact that you can in fact, you know, increase your cognitive ability, that it's nurture over nature. And we used to believe that whatever you were born with cognitively is what you ended up with. And we now know that that's not true, that you can in fact improve your IQ, so.
And I have one more question. In your most recent administrative position, how much time do you spend in schools and in the community? And how have you engaged the classrooms?
I made a point. My secretary and I created the schedule and I, and really she created it for me. But essentially, what it was, was a rotation where every six weeks, and we only had eleven buildings in our district, but every six weeks I would make a point of getting and spending part of a day in each building. And then, of course, there were other opportunities, you know, both in terms of the arts and athletics, you know, to be involved, different things. Certainly in March, I think I read in all seven of the elementaries during reading month. And so, you know, very, very active. I think that's important too. And it's, it gives you great fodder for sharing stories with the community. And the, I still remember a time when I was visiting one of our elementaries and they had told the kindergartners that the superintendent was coming. And he, for some way in his mind, figured that it was, had something to do with Superman. So when I came in, he looks up at me and he says, are you really Superman? And I said, well, I said, I'm not saying that I am, and I'm not saying I'm not, but we've never been seen in the same room together. So, but those are kind of stories and opportunities that you have that, you know, that it's, you need to be out of your office. You need, you need, you know, there's work that has to be done in the office. Most of my work I got done in the, in the hours before school started and after it ended. So as far as the superintendent's work. But the important work was being out the buildings and being visible. And it was, at least for me, I think it was one of the reasons why I was successful in both my previous two superintendent's positions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we have come full circle. We're back to Mrs. Burton.
We have. And we're running right on time, which is great.
Okay, good.
We'd like to take a few minutes now to provide you with an opportunity to ask any questions that you might have for the Board of Education.
Well, I've done my homework on the board. I realize the importance of having a good governance team. And everyone that I spoke with regarding your governance team was very positive and indicated that they didn't feel that there was hidden agendas or, you know, that you really wanted to do what's best for the kids in Livonia and the district. So I would ask one question, and if several of you want to respond or just, you know, one or two of you, it's fine. But it's a reflective inquiry question, and it's a format of questioning that quite often I would use with my leadership team. So here goes. Let's say I'm your candidate, and you hire me a superintendent, and a year has passed. And at the end of that year, somebody asks you what kind of job Ron Wilson's done. And you're able to give them just a glowing response. What would I have to have accomplished during that year in order to merit such a response?
I'm going to go open it up to whoever would like to jump in first. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Number one, I think, keep us out of deficit.
Yes.
I think, I think that would be important.
Sure.
We do have a couple of focus schools. I would like to see those come out of focus.
Sure.
I think those are the two things that I would be most impressed with.
Mrs. Bonfield.
So my big beef is school funding. So I think I would really like to see a very close working relationship with the state and someone who is really fighting for Livonia all the time and taking it up there and letting them know. And I think Livonia is one of those districts where if they said, if you went to them and said, what else can you do? Or what are we doing wrong? They're going to say, nothing, but you need to cut more because, you know, it's stuff like that.
Sure.
So I think my, my big thing would be really staying on top of the legislators and working toward a resolution that we're, you know, positively funding our public education. And I think you rattled off a couple of data points that, you know, my ears perked up. You know, you're like, well, you know, they're very similar districts, but they have a higher foundation allowance and their kids are doing better. You know, why isn't the state, you know, why aren't they looking at that data and understanding that data? And so that's, you know, more money, I feel like, yeah.
Mr. Centers.
So I certainly agree with both of those sentiments. I think, you know, as a board, we are very active in, you know, telling the story of Livonia Public Schools. And that includes some of the challenges we have with school funding and other things. We, it is very important for us to have a district that's funded appropriately. But also, I think that we are a district that, in a board, that it takes time to celebrate the good things. And we try to work very collaboratively. And with the community, we do community forums. We, we really value our bargaining groups. We know that, you know, our teachers and support staff are the people that come into contact with our kids and that they really make the experience in a lot of ways. So, you know, if you can improve on that experience or, you know, in any way, I think that would be very positive and something we'd be very happy about.
Mrs. Laura.
Thank you, President Burton. I also believe that it is very important not only to set up visions, but to stick with it. And at the end of your year, to be showing some success in those areas.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I would look to see if you had helped us to not only establish but maintain our desired identity as a lighthouse district. Certainly in the past twenty years, there have been other districts who, as you've mentioned before, with similar populations, who've given us some, you know, some competition in that area. And I would like to see Livonia be as strong and recognized that way as we used to be.
Thank you.
Mrs. McConnell. Thank you, President Burton. I guess I would like, everything's tied to funding in my book. I mean, because that's just how things work, unfortunately. But I would love to see if you could find a pot of gold somewhere where we could support our teaching staff and fund them fully and get what they need for their, to effectively manage and maintain their classrooms and give the best to our students.
Without trying to duplicate what's, a lot of what has already been said, I would include on my list that you've been very active in our buildings and in our community. And that you've been known for having an open-door policy. I would like our community members and our employees to feel that they can approach you at any time and discuss the things that are important to them. I would like you to, to have known what your role is as a superintendent, known what the role of the board is, and the role of our various employee groups and our stakeholders. And not only lived within your role, but encouraged the others to also live within their roles. Because it's a multifaceted organization and it, it works at its best when each individual is performing their job duties and not trying to do somebody else's.
Absolutely.
I would like to be able to still say that we have not privatized any of our employee groups. That would be a huge success. And I would like the folks in Lansing to know that you are the superintendent of Livonia Public Schools. I would like for them, I would like for your word to have clout. And I would like for you to be active advocating for our district and for the students in the state of Michigan. That's a long list.
That's a lot.
Well, I've taken notes.
Yep. You still have time. Are there other questions you'd like to ask our board?
You know, I really feel like I did a pretty good job, you know, preparing. And so I really don't have any burning questions right now. I do have a closing, if that's appropriate, or...
It will be in just a moment, but we do still have a little bit of time. And we do have some questions from the audience. So since we have time and we have questions, I'm thrilled that we have both. We have a question. It reads, "It seems public, the public perception of public schools and the people who work in them is at a low point. What steps would you take to showcase some of the great work being done by LPS employees?"
Well, I, speaking from experience, I think having a, an active, you know, foundation and some of those opportunities to showcase the programs, whether it's through some sort of a gala or annual, you know, event. Some of your neighboring schools have done that very effectively. And it was one of the reasons why we decided to go ahead and do that in Howell because of the success that they had had. I think that I've developed a great relationship with the media in our area. And so, and I had my cell phone number. And I would say, you know, ever you are lacking a story, gets down close to deadline, and you need a story, I'll have a story for you on something positive that's happening in our district. And so I think that that was huge. And believe it or not, you'd be surprised how often they're lacking a story, you know. And you can get something in front of them. I think that, you know, once again, is that creating that sense of community and the notion that, you know, we're here to do what's best for kids. And, you know, it's, I grew up in a home where, when I was first born, both of my parents were teachers. My dad ended up finishing his career as an attorney. But, you know, education, you know, I'm the oldest to beat kids, and I have four siblings that are involved in education. And so I see, you know, the great contributions that educators make, are making and have made, you know. And it's, it's so disheartening for me to see, you know, the way, you know, media and even some of the general public has attacked schools and tried to blame them, you know, for some of the woes in our society. And I think that's, that's a tough thing to deal with, but it's something that we have to do. If we don't tell our story, if we don't talk positively about the things that we're doing for kids... for kids, nobody else is going to do that for us.
Okay. Another question is, Livonia is a large and influential school district. If you were hired as superintendent, what might you do to influence our funding crisis at the state level?
Well, I, it just so happens, I know the state superintendent of the schools, and I know his history as being a lobbyist, so I think I would, you know, first reach out to Brian and ask him what kind of things that we could do as superintendents that would be most helpful to him. You know, I would get to know our local legislators and make sure that they too had my cellphone number and that I could access them. And then I would, I would search, you know, for opportunities, you know, through, I know that Tri-County Alliance is active here, and I know Mark Burton with Tri-County Alliance, and there's lots of really positive things that they're doing and advocating for. I think that the power that the Tri-County Alliance has with Wayne McComb and Oakland Counties is they have the majority of the kids in the state, almost 600,000 of the million three kids in the state are in these three counties. And so I think that we need to have a role. I think we need to be outspoken about the needs in our area, you know. And, you know, I've heard, you know, criticisms of salaries and stuff like that, but, you know, we know the cost of living in southeast Michigan is higher, you know, there isn't a lot of other places. And so I think that's important, you know, that, you know, we be heard. I think the important of not just being someone who's, you know, criticizing the actions that are happening down there, but someone that's rolling up their sleeves and providing some ideas on how things can be improved. And I've had some experience with that. You know, I, in my current role, I've worked with the legislature and to get a million five in funding allocated for districts that want to purchase a data analytics program. And so, you know, there's, there are ways, you know, if you work through channels, you know, that you can get some things done. But you need to make sure that you're very clear in what you're asking for and why you're asking for it, and that you're not being unreasonable.
Another question we have, or the last question that we have, is what do you see as the role of local unions in your district? And could you give examples of your good, of your good working relationships with the unions? We've kind of touched on that in the past, but we'll go ahead.
Yeah, I kind of touched on those. You know, it's interesting, because, you know, I'm a relationship type person, and so, you know, things like, you know, hosting, you know, get-togethers at our home, you know, and inviting, you know, our membership and their spouses, especially their leadership and their spouses to come. Two of my closest fishing buddies were, or one was president and vice president of our teachers' union, you know. And so, you know, having opportunities to be involved with people outside of school, you know, and let them get to know you and maybe see a little bit different side, you know, I think that's really important. I think back to our past president in Howell, I still have a text message on his, on my phone from, they just had their first child, and I was one of the people that I felt fortunate enough that he sent a picture of the new baby, you know. And so I think that that's really important. I think that those relationships are, like I mentioned earlier, if you've made deposits, you know, there's times when you can make a withdrawal without souring the relationships.
You've mentioned that you have a closing statement you'd like to make. Why don't you go ahead and do that this time, and I'll close up our interview period.
One of the, and I actually am going to open up the book here, and I know the story by heart, but I don't want to miss any of it. But the, I was first exposed to this 10 years ago when I was going through the Michigan Leadership Institute Supes Academy, and it's a book by Major General John Stafford, and he was the superintendent of Seattle Public Schools. He's also the guy who was Schwarzkopf's number two that was responsible for moving all the equipment and troops and everything to the Middle East in the First Gulf War. So anyways, he talks about a story about, and it's one of my favorite stories, and it's real short, so, but it says, "Once two men shared a hospital room. The man in the bed by the door was gravely ill. Doctors questioned his hold on life, but the man in the bed by the window was stronger and often passed the time by describing the scene outside. There's a park, he would say, or I see children playing, or look, the ice cream truck is coming, or ah, two lovers walking hand in hand. As the sicker man in the bed by the door grew stronger, he would nod and smile. The vicarious contact with the outside world cheered him. After a week, the man in the bed by the window went home, and the sicker man was moved to the bed by the window. The following morning, as soon as the nurse had opened the curtains, he raised himself up and looked out. There, to his surprise, was a parking lot, barren concrete with a few randomly parked cars, no children, no lovers, no park. At first, he was furious. How could this friend have misled him? Then disappointed, he had so anticipated the view, but in the hours as they ticked by, he realized that the gift his friend had given him. The images the man had painted for him reminded him of all that was good about life. They renewed his sense of hope and possibility. Moreover, in even more than the medical care he was receiving, those images had strengthened him. Today, we are the man in the bed by the window, looking out for the children of Livonia." I paint a similar picture for our citizens and school employees. They must too much see the possibilities in our schools and believe the possibilities can be realized. How else will they inspire our children every single day? For the sake of our children, for the sake of our city, we must all share a common vision that our schools can and be safe places filled with love where all students learn. And I share that, and I purposely read that to you, and hopefully I can say it without tearing up. I had a teacher and a coach who may have a huge impact on my life, even though my parents were educators. I was undiagnosed dyslexic until I was in eighth grade and was a non-reader, and so, you know, a teacher so dramatically changed my life, and I never would have become a superintendent, I probably never would have graduated from high school had it not been for a teacher and a coach. And so part of the work that I do is to give back, and I feel real obligated to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. We sincerely appreciate your interest in the position of superintendent of Livonia Public Schools. As you know, you're one of four candidates that we're interviewing, the first of four. We will continue our interviews later this evening and again tomorrow evening, and this board will deliberate and come to a decision of taking it four down to two on Thursday evening, and we'll get that information to you as promptly as we possibly can. I appreciate your coming. We enjoyed meeting with you, and we will be talking to you soon.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. This board is going to be at recess for about 15 minutes or so, no, actually 25 minutes, and we'll begin our next interview at 8 o'clock. We're at recess.
Good evening. Welcome back to the continuation of the special meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education of September 8th, 2015. We are continuing this evening with our interviews for candidates for the position of superintendent. And we have with us at this time, Mr. Michael Musseri. Mr. Musseri is currently the superintendent of Armada Public Schools here in Michigan. What we'll do is the same format that we did with the first interview. We'll take a moment to go around the table and introduce ourselves as board members. And we do also have two non-board members who will join us at the table and I'll address that after all of the introductions. Mrs. Jarvis, can you start us off?
Thank you, President Burton. Hi, Mike.
Hi.
I'm Liz Jarvis. I'm the most recently elected trustee on the board. Welcome to Livonia.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike. I'm Dan Centers. I've been here about a year and a half on the board.
Okay.
Hi, Tammy Bonnefield. I've been here about two and a half years, three and a half years. And I have two kids in the district.
Hi, I'm Colleen Burton. I'm the president of the board. I've been on the board for six years now.
Hi, I'm Diane Laura. I'm a re-terney. I was on the board in the 90s for four and a half years, and this is my fourth year again on the board.
Welcome, Mike. Hi, I'm Eileen McDonald, and this is my fourth year on the board.
Hi, Mike. I'm Mark Johnson. This is my, I'm going on five and a half years on the board.
Andrea Oakwood, interim superintendent. Nice to see you.
Dana Wintery, director of human resources. Antec.
As I said at the beginning of our first interview, so it'll be a repeat for our audience, but new for you, Mike. We do have two non-board members sitting at our table tonight. The decision of hiring the new superintendent is exclusively up to the members of the Board of Education, and we take that responsibility very, very seriously. Our board believes in not making action and doing things without the knowledge of our superintendent at any time, no matter what it is. So, our superintendent has been asked to be at the table with us tonight. And we have been blessed to have Mr. Dana Wintery as the director of human relations, who's also been instrumental in being our point person between the board and our search firm and all of our candidates. So, by all means, Mr. Wintery is asked to be at the table with us this evening also. Just to keep all the players informed of everything that's going on.
Fantastic. I feel very welcome. Thank you.
Good. The interview will take up to 90 minutes, with questions submitted from the audience if time allows also. There will be approximately 25 to 30 questions from the board, and what we'll do is we will take, each board member will take one area of concentration and ask a few questions in that specific area.
Okay.
Toward the end of the interview, we'll ask you an opportunity to ask any questions of the board that you may have. I imagine you've got at least a few.
I sure do.
There will also be a time for you to have a closing statement if you wish.
Okay, great.
Near the end. And Mr. Wilmot is in the audience, and Mrs. Laura here at the table will help make sure that we stay on time and keep ourselves so that we can all go home at a reasonable hour tonight.
Very good.
The audience feedback and the questions from our audience may be submitted on green forms that I have, such as this. Some members of our audience have already submitted forms for the first candidate, and we will go ahead and repeat those questions also, so you don't have to write them a second time. If you are in the audience, you can consider that. That one form will take care of both candidates. The board will consider these comments and questions if the form has been signed, if the questions are not duplicates or illegal, and if time permits. The task of choosing our next superintendent is exclusively the responsibility of the Board of Education as representatives of our community. However, we do appreciate and seek input from our staff and community. While we are not seeking the recommendations of which individual to hire, we are seeking your input as to the strengths and/or concerns of any candidate. Please keep in mind that issues, please keep in mind that the issues may, I'm sorry. Please keep in mind the issues that we may not use as conditions for our hiring, as they may be illegal. They are printed at the bottom of the form. Mr. Wilmot will collect these green forms again near the end of our session, so if you have any additional questions, please feel free to submit them to Mike at that time. I'm going to go ahead and begin our questions this evening. While we have had the opportunity to review your resume, the audience and the public has not. Would you please briefly review your background and tell us what causes you to be interested in the position of Livonia superintendent at this point in your career?
Well, thank you. First of all, my background. I grew up in Indiana, so I'm a native Hoosier. I married my high school sweetheart, who's sitting behind me, Amy. And yesterday, we celebrated our 30th wedding anniversary. We got married very, very young. And we have two sons, 25 and 23. They are now both college graduates. The eldest son lives north of Chicago. He's an actuary, and he went to Johns Hopkins in Maryland. And my son, Matthew, followed in his parents' footsteps, went to Purdue in finance and accounting, and he's currently looking for his first career job right now. I, as I mentioned, well, I'm a Purdue graduate in accounting. I have an MBA, Masters of Business Administration from Ball State University in Muncie, Indiana. And in the year 2000, I obtained my Ed Specialist Degree in School Administration from Oakland University. I began my career in education in 1993 with the South Bend Community School Corporation. I was the director of finance. South Bend is a very large urban school district with 21,000 students. So, I gained valuable experience in working with the fifth-largest school district in the state of Indiana. And I also found my passion. Prior to that, I was working for General Motors in Warren, Michigan, at the tech center. My wife and I had our two boys at the time. They were one and three, so we thought we were going to raise our kids back in Indiana near family. So, I started the process, and that's how I ended up in South Bend. And at that time, Amy decided that she wanted to continue working and sought a position in Indiana. It didn't work out, so I came back to Michigan, found the Armada position in 1996, and I've been there, this is my 20th year. So, I was the assistant superintendent for finance and operations for 16 years. So, I was responsible for all the support service aspects of the school district, as well as athletics, believe it or not. In a small school district, you wear a lot of hats. My friends from South Bend thought I would be bored, but almost the opposite is true because you do a lot of different things, which is good because I'm very much aware of the business. In 2012, our superintendent retired, so I applied and was appointed superintendent in July of 2012. I have just started my fourth year. The superintendent position has been the best position I've ever had. I truly enjoy it. I can make a difference with 2,000 students in my community. We've made a lot of progress in the last three years, which I'm very proud of, which we'll probably talk about during the interview process. The reason I am seeking a different position at this time, I believe I have a formula for
Good evening. Welcome back to the continuation of the special meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education of September 8th, 2015. We are continuing this evening with our interviews for candidates for the position of superintendent. And we have with us at this time Mr. Michael Musseri. Mr. Musseri is currently the superintendent of Armada Public Schools here in Michigan. What we'll do is the same format that we did with the first interview. We'll take a moment to go around the table and introduce ourselves as board members. And we do also have two non-board members who will join us at the table and I'll address that after all of the introductions. Mrs. Jarvis, can you start us off?
Thank you, President Burton. Hi, Mike.
Hi.
I'm Liz Jarvis. I'm the most recently elected trustee on the board. Welcome to Livonia.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike. I'm Dan Centers. I've been here about a year and a half on the board.
Okay.
Hi, Tammy Bonnefield. I've been here about two and a half years, three and a half years, and I have two kids in the district.
Hi, I'm Colleen Burton. I'm the president of the board. I've been on the board for six years now.
Hi, I'm Diane Laura. I'm a re-terney. I was on the board in the 90s for four and a half years, and this is my fourth year again on the board.
Welcome, Mike. Hi, I'm Eileen McDonald, and this is my fourth year on the board.
Hi, Mike. I'm Mark Johnson. This is my, I'm going on five and a half years on the board.
Andrea Oakwest, interim superintendent. Nice to see you.
Dana Wintery, director of human resources.
Antecay.
Antecay, that's right, yes. When need be, yes. As I said at the beginning of our first interview, so it'll be a repeat for our audience, but new for you, Mike. We do have two non-board members sitting at our table tonight. The decision of hiring the new superintendent is exclusively up to the members of the Board of Education, and we take that responsibility very, very seriously. Our board believes in not making action and doing things without the knowledge of our superintendent at any time, no matter what it is. So, our superintendent has been asked to be at the table with us tonight. And we have been blessed to have Mr. Dana Wintery as the director of human relations, who's also been instrumental in being our point person between the board and our search firm and all of our candidates. So, by all means, Mr. Wintery is asked to be at the table with us this evening also. Just to keep all the players informed of everything that's going on.
Fantastic. I feel very welcome. Thank you.
Good. The interview will take up to 90 minutes, with questions submitted from the audience if time allows also. There will be approximately 25 to 30 questions from the board, and what we'll do is we will take, each board member will take one area of concentration and ask a few questions in that specific area.
Okay.
Toward the end of the interview, we'll ask you an opportunity to ask any questions of the board that you may have. I imagine you've got at least a few.
I sure do.
There will also be a time for you to have a closing statement if you wish.
Okay, great.
Near the end. And Mr. Wilmot is in the audience, and Mrs. Laura here at the table will help make sure that we stay on time and keep ourselves so that we can all go home at a reasonable hour tonight.
Very good.
The audience feedback and the questions from our audience may be submitted on green forms that I have, such as this. Some members of our audience have already submitted forms for the first candidate, and we will go ahead and repeat those questions also, so you don't have to write them a second time. If you are in the audience, you can consider that. That one form will take care of both candidates. The board will consider these comments and questions if the form has been signed, if the questions are not duplicates or illegal, and if time permits. The task of choosing our next superintendent is exclusively the responsibility of the Board of Education as representatives of our community. However, we do appreciate and seek input from our staff and community. While we are not seeking the recommendations of which individual to hire, we are seeking your input as to the strengths and/or concerns of any candidate. Please keep in mind that issues, please keep in mind that the issues may, I'm sorry. Please keep in mind the issues that we may not use as conditions for our hiring, as they may be illegal. They are printed at the bottom of the form. Mr. Wilmot will collect these green forms again near the end of our session, so if you have any additional questions, please feel free to submit them to Mike at that time. I'm going to go ahead and begin our questions this evening. While we have had the opportunity to review your resume, the audience and the public has not. Would you please briefly review your background and tell us what causes you to be interested in the position of Livonia superintendent at this point in your career?
Well, thank you. First of all, my background. I grew up in Indiana, so I'm a native Hoosier. I married my high school sweetheart, who's sitting behind me, Amy. And yesterday, we celebrated our 30th wedding anniversary. We got married very, very young. And we have two sons, 25 and 23. They are now both college graduates. The eldest son lives north of Chicago. He's an actuary. And he went to Johns Hopkins in Maryland. And my son Matthew followed in his parents' footsteps, went to Purdue in finance and accounting, and he's currently looking for his first career job right now. I, as I mentioned, well, I'm a Purdue graduate in accounting. I have an MBA, Masters of Business Administration from Ball State University in Muncie, Indiana. And in the year 2000, I obtained my Ed Specialist Degree in School Administration from Oakland University. I began my career in education in 1993 with the South Bend Community School Corporation. I was the director of finance. South Bend is a very large urban school district with 21,000 students. So, I gained valuable experience in working with the fifth-largest school district in the state of Indiana. And I also found my passion. Prior to that, I was working for General Motors in Warren, Michigan, at the Tech Center. My wife and I had our two boys at the time. They were one and three. So, we thought we were going to raise our kids back in Indiana near family. So, I started the process, and that's how I ended up in South Bend. And at that time, Amy decided that she wanted to continue working and sought a position in Indiana. It didn't work out, so I came back to Michigan, found the Armada position in 1996, and I've been there. This is my 20th year. So, I was the assistant superintendent for finance and operations for 16 years. So, I was responsible for all the support service aspects of the school district, as well as athletics, believe it or not. In a small school district, you wear a lot of hats. My friends from South Bend thought I would be bored, but almost the opposite is true because you do a lot of different things, which is good because I'm very much aware of the business. In 2012, our superintendent retired. So, I applied and was appointed superintendent in July of 2012. I have just started my fourth year. The superintendent position has been the best position I've ever had. I truly enjoy it. I can make a difference with 2,000 students in my community. We've made a lot of progress in the last three years, which I'm very proud of, which we'll probably talk about during the interview process. The reason I am seeking a different position at this time, I believe I have a formula for success in how to run a school district, and that takes a collaborative effort between the school board, administration, staff, students, and parents. I believe Livonia has that same model, and I'm trying to make a difference for more students' lives. So, that's why I'm here today.
Thank you. Given what you know about our school district, could you tell us what you believe are the most immediate challenges that we face?
Well, from what I know about the Livonia school district, it's very common in all districts in Michigan is declining enrollment. That is a challenge. It's a challenge even in Armada, as well as academic achievement. You want to balance those two things. Those are the, you have very good ACT scores from the data that I've looked, that I've researched, but there's also room for improvement. So, how you manage your district becoming slightly smaller over the next several years, maintaining finance, that's a common issue in every district, as well as Livonia. How you manage the student enrollment decline with your finances and increase academic achievement is, I believe, your three biggest challenges.
What specific capabilities and/or qualities would you bring to this position that would set you apart from the other candidates?
I believe my experience and people skills would separate me from candidates. I don't personally know the other candidates, so I can't really comment that way. I can just talk about myself. The last three years, I've, we've demonstrated academic success in Armada. All of our achievement scores, our standardized testing scores have pretty much gone up. The ACT scores have increased four straight years, so we're finally above state and national average. I've turned the finances around. We finally had an increase in fund equity. We had a very small fund balance of 1%, but after last school year, it's now at 2%. And morale in the district is very good, always has been. I used to be the chief negotiator for the school district, and I've always been a good people person. And even in tough economic times, we've been able to have high morale in our district. I do everything I can for my employees, whether it's in-service or providing them an outstanding leader as a building principal.
Thank you. As I mentioned, we are going to be passing the questioning around to different members of our board for different areas, and right now, it'll be up to Mrs. Laura.
Thank you, President Burton. We're going to talk a little bit about community relations.
Great.
So, first, how specifically would you go about establishing and maintaining positive public relations with our community?
Well, I would try to be out there and meet as many people and constituents as I can. I would start with the education community, meet with the schools, meet with the booster organizations at the high school level, meet with the elementary parent groups. I would also reach out to the mayor, fire chief, anybody that I can, that has an impact on the school district. You're going to see me a lot at events, such as athletic events, school plays, that sort of thing. I'm pretty much a visible superintendent. And I wasn't going to be a superintendent till my kids were grown, because I wanted to do it right. And I knew that if, because I was very involved with my kids' lives growing up, and after they grew up, I've been able to spend a lot of time in the district at events, which is very important, and you get to know a lot of people. I'd probably try to reach out to the service organizations in town. I know there are several here. So, whether I'm a guest speaker or a joint service organization or two, that's probably what I would be looking into.
Would you share with us ways in which you could accomplish successful communications with the community regarding your district's problems and accomplishments or accomplishments?
I think the biggest communication tool that you have is your website. So, for instance, I read about your teacher training the other day. That's fantastic. So, if there's any critical issues out there, utilizing your website is one avenue. I don't know if you do district newsletters, but I do that three times a year. I send that to the public. We actually mail them out. Because my community, only about 75% has internet service. So, in order to reach everybody, we do a mailing to all communities. And then, that will have pertinent information. For instance, we might be having a bond issue, or whatever we want to share with the community, that's on there. And really, I think those two things are probably the top ways to reach people.
What are some examples of community activities in which you have been an active participant and/or provided leadership, and in what ways did that benefit your district?
Well, this past month in August, there were a couple of events that I participated. I'm on the board for the Armada Education Foundation, and we did our big fundraiser in August. One of our famous graduates is a guy named Dick Enberg. He's a famous sports announcer, and he was just inducted into the Baseball Hall of Fame. We do a golf outing in his honor, and he still is a broadcaster for the San Diego Padres. He does 130 games out of the 162. But we scheduled it on a weekend when he wasn't announcing, so he flew into Armada. We did a golf outing. We probably raised $40,000 to $50,000. So, those dollars directly come back to the Armada students. And I provide leadership because our teachers apply for grants, and the board will ask me input about each request. It doesn't mean they select exactly everything I recommend, but they do appreciate my feedback. And they, on an annual basis, we give about $25,000 out from that route. And another, second one that happened last month, I'm a member of the Armada Lions Club. In Armada, the big event in town is our Armada Fair. I don't know if you've ever come to Armada, but there's plenty of apple orchards and not a lot of industry. But we have a fair. It's actually a pretty good fair. And we, the Lions Club, run the Roadkill Cafe. We raise money for not just the school, but for other community events. And I was the corn and nachos guy. So, for four hours on a couple of different days, I served corn and nachos at the Roadkill Cafe. And those dollars come back to not only the school district, but the community. So, those are just two examples that I've done recently.
Well, our next question is about educational foundations.
Okay.
If you'd like to add more about your experiences dealing with them, and then, what role do you see an educational foundation playing in a public school district today?
Well, education foundations are very beneficial for school districts. Our foundation has been around about 20 years and has raised over $300,000. And for a small community like Armada and School District, that helps us tremendously. We all know finances are tough. Any extra dollar that we can generate for our school district helps. So, I don't know if the superintendent plays a role in the Livonia Education Foundation or sits on the board, but I actually sit on the board of the Armada Foundation. And we collaboratively work together and identify areas that will help the school district.
Thank you. And Mr. Johnson will be asking you next set of questions.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Laura. And I'm going to ask a couple of questions as it relates to political awareness.
Very good.
What do you feel the superintendent's role is in influencing county and state political processes, impacting K-12 education, and how have you been involved in those processes?
I believe the superintendent plays a critical role in that area. I believe it's the responsibility of the superintendent to communicate the needs to the constituents that vote on any kind of financing that comes to schools. The best way I know how to do that is to meet with them one-on-one and kind of share our story. I've had Congresswoman Candace Miller in my district three to four times as superintendent. Governor Snyder has met our robotics team. Mark Shower, the Democrat that ran for governor, spent a day in Armada schools and did a video to kind of promote his campaign. And at the superintendent conference two years ago, that video was shown to all the superintendents in the state. And it just highlighted the need for education. And it doesn't matter if you're Republican or Democrat. I need to reach out and talk to anybody that will listen. We've had Senator Pavlov in our district, as well as half the state senate education committee in Armada touring our high school. They were interested in our CTE programs. So, we play an active role, and when you have a good relationship, they'll often ask us for feedback on bills. Well, what do you think? And then, that's the kind of relationship you need to have, not adversarial, we want money. You need to meet with the people, treat them like human beings, and they'll treat you like human beings. And then, you can sit down and have adult conversations about the needs of a school district. I think we've done a very good job in Armada doing that. And I think Livonia would have a bigger voice, being a bigger school district, being the 10th-largest city in the state of Michigan. So, when I was in South Bend, it was kind of the same thing, being the fifth-largest school district. You affect more students, so they want to know a little bit more. I mean, I'm not saying they don't want to know about Armada, but if you can affect more students, you can make a bigger difference.
Okay. Next, what do you think is the most important educational policy challenge facing districts like ours today, either at the state or federal level?
Policy challenge? School funding, probably. I know your $25 didn't go too far this school year. We're pretty much in the same boat with the $25 increase for the year. But, you know, I've been in education 22 years, and finance has always been a problem. Even when the economy is good, finances are a problem. But you have to have conversations to show that there's merit for what you're doing. If you can show that you're providing a great product and students are engaged in learning and improving, and really, that's our future, people are going to listen. I think that it's going to continue to be a problem, the finance, so we have to stay on top of it and manage it the best we can. But if you want the number one issue, I think it's finance.
Okay. What has been the most unpopular administrative decision you've had to make? And how did you handle the reaction to that decision?
That's a great question. Unpopular. A pretty popular guy. So, let's go with, in my second year, and it wasn't unpopular by all, but in my second year, I restructured the secondary schedule. In Armada, we have a high school, a middle school, and we have a math science academy, where students from other district and our district go a half a day. When I took over as superintendent, I had a great district, but I almost had four separate buildings operating on their own. So, I aligned them K-12. And what made matters more challenging for staffing was our high school was on a five-period day with trimesters. Our middle school was on a seven-period day, and our academy was on a six-period day. So, we had five, six, and seven. So, we are now all on six-period days. I sent a survey out to the staff, and about 55% were in favor of the restructuring to have a kind of a common academic time for everybody. Now, it really has saved us not only money, but it's increased our academic achievement. Because we have, we're a small community, and our district is almost a campus. Our high school, middle school, and elementary are all on one site. My office and the math science center are about two and a half blocks away, or if you have fit, it's 1,000 steps. So, we're real close, and teachers kind of go back and forth, and so do secondary students at times. They go back and forth from building to building for a course. So, but it has allowed us to be more efficient because we can now have teachers more easily have their schedule to be five or six hours, depending on what it takes. When it was six, five, six, and seven, it was very clumsy. I mean, we had teachers going back and forth, and they'd have a 40-minute period where they were doing nothing. It was not very cohesive. So, when I, it wasn't, it was kind of unpopular, but at this point in time, we are all now used to it, and we pretty much are fine with it. And the results kind of speak for themselves because our test scores went up, our ACT scores went up. And I was able to downsize in the three years, probably 10 FTE, just because of that. It was unpopular at first, but I would say now we're okay.
Great. Thank you. And I'm now going to hand it off to Mr. Centers.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So, Mike, we're going to talk about leadership attributes.
Okay.
First question, could you describe your typical style of leading? And talk about situations in which you might vary from that style.
Okay. I like to lead with positivity and with a collaborative management model. I don't normally make decisions without discussing it with my administrative team or board, staff. I like as much feedback as I can get before making a major decision. But there may come a time where I have to make a decision right away. I think one such case is when we had the horrific act in Connecticut when the elementary students were all killed. I made a decision without consulting too many people to lock our doors and put a buzzer, camera buzzer system in. We've been a school district for 150 years. Our doors have never been locked before that happened. And shortly after that, we installed buzzers and cameras. Everybody was appreciative, especially the elementary parents, that we did that sort of thing. But to me, it was just common sense that that decision be made. And I mean, if anyone that's had kids or even was kind of shaken to the core when something like that happened. I don't really think it was an emotional decision as much as a decision to comfort the parents. And kind of like the rescheduling, we're all now used to it. Everybody comes to our school during the day, rings the buzzer. Our secretaries see them. If they don't know them, they put the ID up to the camera, and we let them in.
Great. Thank you. The next question, could you please describe your leadership experience working with diverse constituents ethnically, socially, and/or economically?
We're not very diverse in Armada, but my three years in South Bend, it was a very diverse community. For diverse staff, it was a very positive experience for me. It's kind of when I fell in love with education. The thing that, when you go from business to education, people in education really have a passion for what they do. It's amazing. And I'm kind of a people person and a passionate guy, and so that rubbed me the right way. We had several diversity training seminars during my time in South Bend. And the goal was to ensure that all of our students were on the same page. There was no bullying. We accepted everybody for who they are, for what their race was, what their beliefs were. And students really want that. They don't want adverse environment. They want a safe environment when they go to school. They want to have a happy time. They don't want that to be a negative event. If students are negative, they're not going to learn. So, I think from that, that's what I gained most out of the diversity training that I had worked in in South Bend, was that the acceptance, and then, ultimately, the students were benefited.
Thank you. What are some examples of how you've used data and research to make important decisions in your current position?
Well, we are data-driven. The business world has always been data-driven. That came into education a few years back, and and that's kind of, I don't believe you can improve without data. Data tells you where the weaknesses are and what you need to do. We assess our students, eat, we're not trimester, so we, we assess our students with some, with the Northwest Education model, in math and science specifically, and language arts. And we can see where our students' strengths and weaknesses are. We've used that data to kind of identify the bottom 30%. And with that data, for instance, in the bottom 30%, we, at the high school level, since we're not that big, we brought in each student and said, what's going on? Your scores aren't where we know they can be. What are, what are you doing rather than focusing on education? And it was kind of fascinating, because most of those kids, the reason they weren't studying, they're playing video games. So, we've worked with them, and we've kind of closed the achievement gap to where it's about 10% at this time, which is a pretty good number. So, in about three years, we went from a district that had about 90% graduation rate to 98, 99 at this time, and 96% of our students go into college. So, we're very proud of that.
Thank you. What are the key practices needed to establish and maintain a good working relationship with the board, parents, and members of the local business community?
Communication's the key. You have to have an open and effective communication system, whether it's the board or staff. I believe the superintendent and board are a team, and we need to work together, and we may disagree on certain issues, but ultimately, our goal is to provide an education that benefits all students. So, I have an open door policy as superintendent. If any parent has an issue, my door is always open. They can call me anytime, they can visit me anytime if I'm there. And I'm not in a meeting, I'll meet with them. If I'm busy, I'll have my secretary schedule a meeting, and then we'll, we'll sit down and talk. But I, I, you don't want to appear that you're hiding everything, anything at all, because we're talking about students' lives, and that's very apparent, important if you're a parent. And I, I was a parent, and if I ever had an issue, I went to the school administration or teacher, started with the teacher. We'll probably have a chain of command question later, so we'll get into that, but, but communication is key. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you along to Ms. McDonald for questions on instruction and curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Again, welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
I get to do instruction and curriculum, so...
Fantastic.
Yeah, absolutely. An important part of the...
That's why we're here.
...school system, exactly. Please give, give us examples of educational change or reform that you've initiated that improved success for all students.
Well, I think I mentioned earlier the restructuring of my secondary schedule that has resulted in improved academic achievement. I've worked with the curriculum department my entire 22 years, and Indiana was kind of wacky, because we were responsible to bill parents for textbook rental. And a first grader could get a bill for over $100 for textbook rental, because we were to charge 25% of the bill. So, I had to ensure that every, all 36 of our schools had the proper textbooks, because when we send them a bill, and they didn't have the textbook, that was a huge problem. Obviously, if they had the proper textbooks, that helped their achievement, but I, I can really say that the most effective I've had improving achievement has, has been as superintendent. I wasn't that involved with improving academic achievement until I became superintendent. And utilizing data, making, making it a goal to increase student achievement and, and standardized testing my first year. I, I told my teacher, teaching staff at my very first opening day that I wanted to improve standardized test scores, but to me, the most important test score was the ACT, because that's kind of the final exam of, an accumulation of, you know, K through 11. And it also means a lot of money for our kids. So, if they get higher ACT scores, they get more scholarship money. And we graduated about 169 students, and averaged between 2.7 and $3 million in scholarship money. So, that, that's key for us. But I, I think the biggest academic achievement was due to restructuring. And what, what also happened in that restructuring, we were on trimesters, so you could, you had a core subject, only two of the three terms. So, there, there were some cases where they took geometry first and third trimester, and I, I didn't like that at all. I mean, I per, I had, my own kids went through that, and they lost a lot. So, I mean, so what we do now, I added back 2,000 minutes in the core areas, so we have a modified trimester. So, in math, science, and English, and social studies, they're six hours, they'll take those all three trimesters now. So, they're never missing any time academically on the schedule for math. It's translated into improved test scores. I mean, whenever, 2,000 minutes is a lot. If you give teachers 2,000 minutes to do anything, they're going to, that's just naturally going to improve, and that's kind of what happened. So, the, the rest of the schedule, the other two hours are for special, you know, electives. They'll only type, take those two out of the three. So, two out of three trimesters for a special.
Thank you. All right, and the next question, please describe your experience in dealing with both low incident and high incident special education students.
We do a very good job in the special education department. We, we've, we had our special audit recently, and there's, there's 25 standards that you need to meet. And in the last five years, we met all 25 standards in three of those five years, and the other two years, we met, we met 23 out of 25 of the standards. So, it's, you know, it's critical to identify each student and their needs, and after you do that, we need to make sure that we're providing the services that are required by law. And it, it's pretty self-explanatory what needs to be done, and we've been able to do that.
Awesome. Thank you. And my final question is, how would you go about evaluating the effectiveness of the curriculum, teaching methods, and assessments in our, used in our district?
Well, in Livonia, I would rely on my staff. You've got some very talented people here that I would rely on to provide me that information. And I, I also rely on my curriculum director in Armada to, to provide that information for me. We are very much data-driven, and everything we do has a plan, and it's based on the information that we have in front of us.
Great, thank you. And next, I'm turning this over to Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, Mrs. McDonald. Mike, we'll talk a little bit about finances and operations.
Okay.
If you would, please describe your experience with budget development and financial management.
Well, I have a bachelor's in accounting, and my career was in finance prior to becoming a superintendent, so I consider myself very strong in that area. About five years ago, my peers in St. Clair and Macomb County voted me the administrator, administrator of the year, so I have respect from my peers in that area. In South Bend, I handled a $150 million budget. In Armada, my general fund budget is 17 million, quite different. But what is common, and it's probably common here in Livonia, 85% of our budget is people, salary, and benefits. So, from an expense standpoint, after the school year starts, it's pretty easy to project what your budget will be. What is the challenge is the enrollment projection that you do in June for the following school year. I'd say in my 20 years, I have come pretty close 18 out of 20 times. One year, when the economy went south, we were off about 77 students, and that's a pretty significant number. So, I had to come up with a creative way to manage our budget and get us through that school year. And if you would like to know what I did, I, we, we had a teacher buyout mid-year, and we replaced the teachers that took the buyout mid-year with the long-term sub-teachers that were, that had a teaching degree. And that saved us significant dollars to get us through the year. It's probably the best way to do a teacher buyout is mid-year. Doesn't sound great for parents to have a long-term sub-teacher for a year, but there's a lot of, unfortunately, especially at that time, there was a lot of talented people out there without jobs. It's not as much these days. I mean, you're probably experiencing sub-s shortages like we will be, but sometimes you have to be creative and find ways to make the school year work. I have never, in my 20 years in Armada, had a deficit, ended our bu- year in deficit. We've always maintained a positive budget. I, Armada was almost a, our ISD does a lot of lobbying for us also. When the, the new law came through, they were, that requires districts to have a fund equity of 5%. They tried to showcase Armada has a very good school district, their test scores are increasing, and in 10 years, we've only been over 5% equity one of those 10 years. But, you know, personally, I don't think it's a bad idea to have 10% fund equity, it's just, if you, if you want to weigh that versus canceling a program that benefits kids, you either have to say you're going to keep the program or not. In, in Armada, we've chose to keep the programs. We've never, we've, I'm proud to say, we do not, we have not eliminated programs in my entire career in Armada.
Thank you. In tough financial times, Mike, how do you set priorities when there are competing interests?
That's a very good question. And again, whether the economy is good or bad, finances have always been tough. It's, it's just, it's part of our culture now. So, you don't want to get to the point where you're weighing one program or another. What we do is annually assess all of our programs. Is this working? Is this not working? And should we keep a program? We don't really rank programs 1 to 20, this is better than that program. We just, we decide if the program benefits students. Because if you have, have the, if you want to do something that's best for all students, this program's not going to benefit that student every time. So, we identify the programs that we want to keep, and we figure out a way how to finance it.
Okay. Mike, if you could tell me, what has been your experience dealing with the schools of choice program, and what do you see as advantages and disadvantages of such programs?
School of choice. Armada, we went through a quasi-strategic plan probably 15, 16 years ago, and our community wanted to have school of choice. So, in order for school of choice first to work, when you're talking about students coming from other districts, the community has to support that, otherwise, it's going to be a disaster. And our, our community supports it. 27% of my student population is school of choice. Kids came last school year from 17 different school districts to Little Armada. That tells a story in itself that we have a good product. So, you're either all in on, on that aspect or not. And we've, we've embraced it, our students have embraced it, and it's now part of our culture, and we don't mind. For Livonia, I, I know you have, how, what's the term I'm looking for? You have limited school of choice, and I, I think it's good to have school of choice within Livonia, to allow parents that live here, give them the option of different programs. You have the IB program, which is fantastic at one of your high schools, and I, I think that kind of concept is an excellent idea.
Okay.
But I've been on billboards, TV, movie theaters, promoting Armada and school of choice, so I've got some marketing experience in that area, too.
Right, thank you. I'm going to pass you on now to Mrs. Bonnefield.
Hi, welcome again. We're going to work on staff personnel.
Great.
Please describe your most successful experience in building a high-performing work team.
I was the chief nego, I've been the chief negotiator for my first 17 years in Armada. The last three, I've allocated that to my current assistant superintendent. But I've put together a quality team of administrators to negotiate on behalf of the school board. And we have a very amicable, amicable relationship with all of our groups. I recently, in the last month and a half, have settled three contracts for all our support groups, for three-year contracts. So, that process went fairly smoothly. You don't talk a lot, a lot of dollars anymore. It's more work environment, opportunities for advancement, that sort of thing in contracts. Our teacher contract expires at the end of next summer, so we're pretty set for this school year in, in every level. It, it's been, it's been a challenge. I mean, we've had to freeze steps, we've had to freeze salaries a few of the years. I'm proud to say, we've never had to have a pay decrease for any of our staff. Been able to manage our budget to the point where we, that wasn't required. Again, communication is the key when you're, you, you want a lot of the issues solved before you actually go to the bargaining table. So, I meet often with each leader of each group, have conversations, and if there's any issues, we almost know what each other's thinking these days.
My next question is, how would the presidents of the various unions in your most recent district describe you? And I know you've touched on that a little bit, but if you could just expand.
That's kind of funny to me, because I had a disagreement with the head of my teacher union today.
Oh, no.
But it was a friendly disagreement, because we're, we're on very good terms. But he would, I would say, the leaders of our team would say that I'm very open to communication, I'm very approachable. If there's any issue, they do not hesitate to contact me. I, I have always worked well with any union or association over my career. I've, in South Bend, I was on negotiation teams. Probably the biggest challenge in my career in South Bend came in my, my, right after my first year, we had a 11-day teacher strike. And I was, I wasn't the chief negotiator, but I was on the, the bargaining team, because I was the finance guy, of course. And, but what made our, our strike kind of awful was, we had 1,400 teachers, and 700 went on strike, and 700 stayed. And the 700 that stayed got extra money for class coverage, so that, that, that was a whole mess that needed a lot of healing and people skills after we settled the contract. And I, I think for my role, I was, being a people person, I helped... And I, I think for my role, I was being a people person, I helped smooth that. I'm sure it took years and years even after I left to heal a lot of the wounds. But those are some, some of the things we, that happened to us in our, in our business.
What is your philosophy regarding effective professional development for teachers and principals? What role should professional learning communities play, if any?
Well, I implemented professional learning communities in Armada. I think it's very important to have teacher leaders. And it, it's been a positive experience for us. Because what, what has happened is, prior to my superintendency, we had four great buildings, but nobody really talked to each other. Now, all the science teachers across the district will, will get together and, and talk about science. It's, it's very good. They love it. Because the elementary teachers and the middle school teachers are now talking, and the middle school teachers are telling them what they want the kids to learn. And the same at the high school level, they're talking to the middle school teachers. This is what we, the kids need to know before they get here. So, I'm, I'm big, I'm very pro on professional learning communities. In fact, I implemented it.
Fantastic. Got one more question. In your most recent administrative position, how much time do you spend in schools and the community? And how have you engaged classrooms?
Well, being in a small community, I'm, I'm in the schools a lot. I'm actually kind of in a school. My building is a two-story building, and if you walk through a gymnasium, there's a whole school there. So, and it's kind of funny, when I first started in Armada, my office was next to the middle school principal's office for two years. And boy, did my eyes get awakened right away with all the issues that happened in the middle school principal's office. But, I, I think a comment that people would make about me is, I'm very visible. I'm at a lot of events. It's not uncommon for me to be at a sporting event for, for an Armada. Even if it's far away in Grand Rapids. If it's, if it's a state-level competition, our kids are doing really well, I, I go out there to support them, even if it's on a weekend. That's, and I, that's just what I enjoy doing. We do class, what we call classroom walkthroughs about once or twice a, a year, where a couple of us will stop in a classroom for five minutes and we're not evaluating at all. We are just there to be aware of what's going on in the classroom. Our teachers don't mind, the kids love it, superintendent's here, or whoever's with me, they. And what's also kind of neat is we'll take an elementary principal and, to a high school classroom. And we'll take the high school principal to the elementary classroom and, and middle, we, we want everybody to know what's going on. And, and part of the advanced ed process, which we went through, we're now saying we're one Armada. And that's kind of what that is. It's a K-12 alignment, and we're all on the same team, and that's kind of what we're trying to preach.
Thank you. And so now, we've come full circle, so we're going to go back to Mrs. Burton.
Great.
Thank you. We'd like to take a few minutes now to allow you to ask any questions that you might have of our board.
Oh, fantastic.
You probably have some.
I certainly do. Well, I'm, I'm going to ask you a question that you asked me, if that's okay.
Anything's okay.
What do you?
Sounds legal. Almost anything's okay.
Well, you asked it to me, so it should be fairly legal.
Okay, go ahead.
What do you think are the biggest challenges that a new superintendent will face in Livonia?
Okay. I'm going to do the same thing I did last time, I'm going to open it up to board members and finish up myself. Mr. Senators, go ahead.
You know, we, in our similar situation with Armada where we have not received enormous windfalls as far as state funding goes. And you will notice that we've made cuts for better part of a decade. And a lot of those are painful. Five hundred fewer employees, people taking less money, less resources, just all across the board. And again, we're faced with a, a small fund balance. And looking at declining options as far as where we go from there. So, that is what we stay up at night, or I, I stay up at night thinking about a lot of times, and I think others probably do, too. But, you know, that's, I think, our biggest issue.
I would think most school districts would have that same issue.
Yeah.
All right.
Others. Hang on a second, I'm going to see if other, other board members would like to chime in. There, there probably are more thoughts here. Okay, Mrs. Bonnefield.
So, it, my big, my big beef is the, is state funding. But so I'm going to ask a different, or I'm going to answer the different challenge I think that we have. And I think one of the challenges that we have with the district is our parents are very committed to their children. And I think that's fabulous for every family. And our kids are just so well taken care of and, and so cherished. And we all think that education is the most important thing for our kids. Unfortunately, with a, a large district and fifteen thousand students, it gets, it is challenging to provide the different needs of every student. And I think one of the challenges we have is when we have to make a change, that parents are very committed to their kids and their, and the setup that they have and their expectations. And so, when we do have to make a change, I think it's, it's, it's really, it's really impactful to the community. And to, to keep us as a cohesive group and a, a whole community together, I think it's, is, is a challenge for us. Because it just, everyone's so committed.
That's a good thing.
It, it is, but it can be a struggle.
Right. Well, you'd rather have that than no parent support.
Yes. I'm, I, yeah, don't get me wrong. I just, I think that's one of our challenges of our community is, is that there's just so much community input that it makes it difficult to make changes.
Okay.
Other coordinators? Ms. Chatsin?
Yeah, I have some thoughts, but I'm not quite sure how to, how to express them. One thing that we have that's outstanding here is a tremendous staff and cabinet. Any superintendent coming in is going to find that they have a tremendous base of knowledge and information. I think one of the challenges that's going to face a superintendent is to rely on them. So that, as you indicated, you are a people person, you want to get out into the schools. This is a very large district. It, it's going to take time in order to, to accomplish all of that. One of the other things, it, it's, it's really a chess game to try, and, and you hit on it as well. Sometimes you have programs and you have to balance the programs with the financing that you have. And make tough decisions along the way. And, and try and balance that. And I think that's going to be one of the biggest challenges that, that you'll face in a, in a district of this size.
Yeah. It, when I worked in South Bend, it took me two months to get into every school. With thirty-six buildings, you don't have time to go to a school every day. And I understand I'm not going to have time to go to a school every day. But I will never ignore that. And I'm going to do the best I can to get into each building. I'm not saying a lot, but I have to get into each building to know what's going on. I'm not a micromanager at all. I am not. I, I, I won't have any problem relying on the cabinet to do their job. I do not do my curriculum director's job. Prior to my superintendency, we didn't even have a curriculum director. So, that was part of my restructuring as well. So, but, yeah, it is different.
Thank you, President Burton.
Other thoughts for any other coordinators? I would think that, to be a little bit repetitive, funding, of course, is huge. And it is huge for every school district in the state of Michigan. And it's likely going to still get a little worse before I hope and pray it gets any better. But that's, that's what I believe is, is going to be one of the biggest challenges. As was alluded to, we have a large community. And therefore, we have a lot of schools, as you said, to get into. We also have, whoever's going to be the superintendent is going to be following the superintendent who was part of this district for twenty-one years. And who, for the vast majority of folks, was very, 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 very highly respected. That much knowledge, institutional knowledge built up over a, a great deal of time. So, whoever is the new superintendent is going to be stepping into some very large shoes. That, I think, will, will, in and of itself, will be a challenge. And finding the way to get involved in the community is going to be challenging. Because, as we said, there are a lot of schools, there's also almost a hundred thousand people. So, there are a lot of different community organizations. You mentioned that, that you were involved in your community organizations. And, and we found some of that with our former superintendent, and it was something that the board valued. But again, it's, it's such a large community, there are only so many hours in the day to build up that level of involvement. But to a certain degree, that involvement is expected. So, it's, it's a large community, it's a large job, and you still have the same twenty-four hours in a day. So, that's, that's where I think a part of the, the challenge will come in that's, that's, in addition to, to those challenges that have already been named by my colleagues.
Thank you.
You still have some time. Are there other questions you'd like to ask the board?
Yes. Let's talk something positive. What are you most proud of in the school district?
Mrs. Bonnefield, go ahead.
I, I think when I talk about our school district, I think the biggest thing is our staff and our, our administration. And just how committed everyone is, and how committed everyone is to the students. We're just goal-oriented and focused. And it's, it doesn't matter what school you go to, or if you're here at, you know, central office, or if you're in the maintenance office. I mean, it just, every single person, I think, in our district cares so much about our kids and goes way above and beyond. There's nobody that looks at their watch and says, oh, it's, you know, three-thirty, I gotta go. You know, the teachers are hanging out after school. Everybody pitches in. We have half the central office that we had, you know, years ago. Because we keep consolidating with the finances and keep shrinking and shrinking. And our, our offices at our elementary schools and our, and our high schools and middle schools have less staff and less supplies. And you know what? Our teachers come to school and our administration, our staff comes to school every day with a positive attitude. And it's about our kids. And it just, it's a great place to be. And, and I think that's, for me, that's what I like to talk about when I talk about our district.
Okay. Very.
Mrs. Burton. Mrs. McAdams.
I would like to, where I do think that our school district reflects our community of Livonia. And we do have part of Westland. That each high school, each middle school, each elementary school is its own community. And it's the same with how each of us in our own neighborhoods live. We are our own little communities. So, I think we all take pride as parents. And even folks that, you know, their kids graduate and they can continue to, to support our schools. They attend our athletic events. They, you know, they help out with, you know, Box Tops for Education. They, they help, you know, even if it's, you know, the PTAs, well, I think they can do it now, have bake sales for, on Election Day. And the people will come and support. And the state took that away. They brought that back, right?
Yeah, we can do that.
You have to be a hundred feet out.
Oh, well, there you go. Could then chuck one out.
But you can do it.
We can do it. So, I think that's the largest thing that I see as, you know, as a recent graduate. And each school, even though, you know, sometimes they compete against each other in the, in the athletic events and, and certain competitions. But we're still communities within communities, but we're one school district, and everybody's very proud.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. One of the things I see as a strong point of pride in our school district is the number of programs that we have available. We have a very large school district with twenty-five schools. And we have three football teams, we have three marching bands, we have robotics in middle school and in, in high school. We have an IB program, creative and performing arts program. We have a full-time gifted program, starting in first grade and going all the way up to high school. We have something for everybody. We have district-level programs here. We have county-wide programs here. Basically, what we have is one-stop shopping for any family. We have something for every child, and that is a point of pride. We do not have to turn a child away. Every child is welcome here. And we have something that will fit that child's needs and desires and aptitudes. Very exciting.
Thank you.
Mrs. Laura.
I was going to mention that also, but to add to that, we have, outgoing, without going on without this list, we have such a wide variety and large number of programs. They meet the needs of all the students. And we take such pride in that, that we vow, like Armada did, not to cut our programs.
Mr. Centers.
Well, I, I hope I'm not stealing Mrs. Burton's.
I got a list.
You know, I, when I go around and I meet people in the community, how many people tell me, I worked for the district or I worked for the district? You know, people that are support staff, teachers, principals, you know? And it's amazing how much pride they take in the district and the community. And there's people who, just, it, it's, people go so above and beyond that it's, it's really special. And I, I've been in other districts and seen other places. And Livonia's really unique in that, I think. So, we've never privatized. And because of that, I think there's, there's an extra pride in that. And we, as a board, take a lot of pride in that. That, you know, people run, we, we talk, we really feel like, or I really feel like, you know, our, our staff is family. And we try to treat, treat each other with a lot of respect. And we try to treat parents like that, kids like that. And it, it's been, from the top down, that it, there's been a really good example of that. The board has tried to emulate that, so that's what I'm proud of.
Mr. Johnson.
At, at the risk of being repetitious, and we could be here all night talking about the things that we have pride in. But as Ms. Jarvis said, we have so many programs, it's one-stop shopping. But it doesn't stop with just the programs for the, for the kids, for the students. I mean, we've got one of the largest PTSAs in, in the state. It's huge. We have a district school improvement team that's made up of administrators, students, community members that get together two or three times a year and focus on our mission statement that's out there. We have an unbelievable Livonia Education Foundation. That, it, it's really unique in some of the programs that it has. Not only does it give back to the classroom, but we have a program called the Competitive Edge. And the Competitive Edge, if you are a kindergartner coming into this district, the foundation with that cohort will put a hundred dollars in for every kindergartner that signs up.
That's fantastic.
And they stay in that cohort until they graduate. Now, if you leave the district, you don't lose anything because you never put anything in. But that money stays in that cohort for those kids that then graduate. And they can use for, you know, their, their next level of education. It's tremendous. And we've got all of these programs that are not just the, the education programs for the kids, but there's so many more things that encompass this community to be proud of. And hopefully, I haven't exhausted the list, but, thank you, President Burton.
One thing that I'll mention that has not been mentioned yet is I'm enormously proud of the fact that this community passed a one-hundred-and-ninety-five million dollar bond just a couple of years ago. And we're in the process right now of renovating every single one of our buildings, bringing our technology up to speed, bringing our security up to speed, putting new auditoriums on all three of our high schools. And the fact that that wasn't of, just that, I mean, the decision was made by this board to go forward to the community. It was made not in haste, but with three years of work by our, on the part of our administration before we even got to the board level of, of deciding whether to go to our community. And then it was approved by our voters. before we even got to the board level of deciding whether to go to our community, and then it was approved by our voters. It was a multi-year process, and it was approved by our voters, and I am very, very proud of that. I'm proud of the fact that, on a board level, this board understands its role. We take great pride in our role, but we know exactly what is our role and exactly what is not our role. And we are committed to keeping one another in line with, as, as many of our friends from MASP, keeping, keeping ourselves in our swim lane so that other folks can stay in theirs. When the board performs its function well, and the superintendent performs his or her function well, and our administrators and our teachers and our support staff perform their functions well, the whole district can work together well. When we start jumping over and trying to do one another's jobs, it gets mucked up very quickly. But this board is very, very committed to doing our, our job and making sure that we allow others to do theirs. Those things I can, especially the board stuff, I could say to a superintendent, and, because you'll, you'll get that immediately. The thing that I'll tell anybody, and it's, it's been the truth since before my third one was even born, we moved to Livonia, and I will just echo what Ms. Jarvis, Mrs. Jarvis said, and what Ms. Laura and others have said on this board. We moved to Livonia specifically because we didn't even know yet what all of our kids were gonna need, because they weren't even born. We had a one-year-old at the time and a four-year-old at the time, and the other one we, we knew we would hope to have someday. We didn't therefore know their needs, but we knew Livonia covered their needs. And I'm not gonna be repetitious because my board members have, have covered all the different areas of need, but I think that that's an enormous asset to Livonia Public Schools. And I'm very, very, very proud also, as Mr. Centers said, that we have been able to weather the financial storm so far without privatizing our employees. I'm grateful for what they do, and we will continue to fight every day, not amongst ourselves inside of our own district, because we're in agreement there, but, but against the state to try to get enough funding so that we never have to cross that bridge. And we've been able to do a lot of other things and not privatize our employees, and I am very, very proud of that.
You should be. Well, Armada and Livonia are, other than size, are very similar in beliefs. We don't privatize our staff either, because a lot of our custodians and bus drivers live in the community. And tomorrow morning, I'll be on sailboat bus, because it's our first day of school, I like to ride the school bus on the first day of school. And it's amazing what our bus drivers know about all the kids in their bus. I mean, they know everything because they're part of the community. And our custodians are more than just someone that takes care of the facilities, they watch the kids. And that's the kind of culture that I thrive in, and that's kind of what I preach. I try to do whatever I can for our employees, and obviously, we can't do a lot with the finance, but if I can provide a wellness plan for them or staff development, that's what we do.
Do you have any other questions for our board?
I do not, I think.
Good thing, we, we give long answers, don't we? We're still within our time, so. If you don't have any further questions, we have, we have a few questions that have been asked by the audience. I've got four of them, so we're gonna pose them to you and see, see what your thoughts are. One of them, you, you just partially answered. Have you privatized any of the employee groups in Armada or South Bend, or considered privatization?
I, I have not outsourced any groups. Like, the only thing we've, we, we have outsourced a few administrators, but they were already administrators, so they had to go away for 30 days, and then we outsourced them. We've outsourced our substitute teachers, we go through PESG. But as for groups that are associations like maintenance and custodians, no, we don't, we have basically the same belief that you do, is that they are part of our family, they're a part of our team, and they're just as important in the success as, for our students as a teacher. And we really believe that.
Okay. What do you see as the role of the local unions in your district? And could you give examples of how your good working relationships, I'm sorry, could you give examples of your good working relationships with the unions? And again, you've touched on that in the past, but if you'd like to.
Yeah, I've been the chief negotiator over the years, 17 years in Armada. I also was on a negotiation team in South Bend, I wasn't the chief negotiator, but I've, I've, I've been involved with that process for a long time. I've had very good labor relations in Armada, I pride ourself on that. I pride ourself on that the superintendent, the board, administration, staff, students, and parents are all part of a collective team that works together to provide an exemplary education.
Third question that was asked is Livonia is a large and influential school district. If you were hired as superintendent, what might you do to influence our funding crisis at the state level?
Well, I would first get to know all the, the important players at the state level. I've done that already from, from our side, from the, from the Armada side. I would just introduce myself to as many people as I can. I'd probably call Brian Wiston and let him know I'm now the superintendent in Livonia to get a working relationship with him. I think it's critical that I have a relationship with as many people as possible. And with my finance background, I would work with the new superintendent of Wayne Risa and, and see if I can get on some kind of Risa team, because in Macomb, that's, we usually use a team approach when negotiating. We go to Lansing every year, and all of the superintendents from Macomb County go to Lansing once a year to talk whatever the issues are, and we spend a couple of days there, and we know a lot of people. So, I've already made some relationships, I would just make more. And I would think that I'd have a bigger voice with a bigger district.
And the last question from the audience is, it seems public perception of public schools and the people who work in them is at a low point. What steps would you take to showcase some of the great work being done by LPS employees?
It's all part of marketing and communication. So, I would utilize the, the website as a communication tool. I would be, I, I would hope to put out a district newsletter three times a year like I do now. I, I don't know what percent of your community has the internet, so that, like I said, only 75% or so in Armada has that, so we mail that out to make sure that everybody receives the same message. Communication in our business is important, no matter what we do, whether we're training a new teacher, whether we're training a custodian, it's just, it's the key. It's the communication between a board and superintendent will determine our success.
We have just a few minutes remaining, is there anything else you'd like to add, or do you have a closing statement that you'd like to give?
Yes, I have a closing statement. I just, I think I've touched on some of this, but I just want to reiterate that I have over 22 years of successful administrative experience in Armada and South Bend. I'm a key reason behind the transformation of Armada becoming one of the finest school districts in the state. I have collaboratively worked with 28 different board members in Armada alone. My personality and leadership skills have allowed my current district to have great labor relations, even during difficult economic times. I have the trust and respect of the board and staff at every level, as well as the students and parents I have worked with over the years. My business background is a positive. I completely understand that you cannot teach students like a business, but you can run a district with business principles. The customer comes first, do it right the first time, continuously improve, leave the business in better shape than when you arrived. Other candidates want to be a superintendent in the area, I want to be Livonia's next superintendent. That's a big difference. I'm gonna leave you with my 90-day plan with five goals. I utilized a similar plan when I began, began my superintendency in Armada, and it was a great benefit to both the board and myself. Thank you for allowing me to share my story.
Thank you very much. As you know, we are in the middle of our interview process right now. Your interview concludes the second of four that we're going to be doing. We have two more interviews tomorrow evening, and then the board will be deliberating and narrowing down that field on Thursday evening. Our goal is to narrow it down from four to two at that point, to go on for second interviews the following week. And we will be certain to get the word to you as soon as we can make decisions around here and go from there. Again, thank you so much for taking the time to come out with, and be with us this evening, we've enjoyed meeting with you.
Nice to meet you too, thank you.
This also concludes our meeting, for those who may be watching from home or in our audience this evening, you may tune back in tomorrow evening if you'd like to continue watching the interviews, and as for this evening, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much.